Sorry, I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Board of Education to order. The next regular Board of Education meeting will be held on Tuesday, October 27th, in the board meeting room. Thank you, everyone. Thank you for joining us. And for those who are on Zoom, I'd like to say first, a huge thank you for the opening of schools to our administration, to our teachers, and to our staff, and really to our students. I'm hearing reports of full compliance with mask wearing, everyone really respecting that we want to keep our schools open and taking the necessary steps in order to do so. A big thank you. We are one of the few school systems in the state that are open, the only one in Dergay, open fully. And so there's been lots of conversations on board chairs about how we're doing this, what to do it, and I respect all my counterparts' decisions and the information they have. But certainly, I'm very proud of Darian for what they have worked so hard to make happen, and for our teachers for being passionate about teaching children, and for our children for following the rules, which helps us all stay in this together. So a big thank you there. Also, a thank you to the Darian Police Department for all of their help with traffic. I will say, as a parent of high schoolers and middle schoolers, major traffic zone and living by Ox Ridge, there is lots of traffic. Made much more easier to move around with the help of our police department. So a big thank you over to them. And I will say, we continue to monitor our ability to stay open. Right now, it looks well. We have no information that that would change at the moment. And so we appreciate all the time and effort that's gone in to do that. With that, I will turn it over to public comment this evening.
Good evening. If you would like to speak during public comments, please click the participants icon on the bottom of your Zoom screen. Next, click the raised hand option. You will notice a blue hand icon appear in the upper corner of your screen where your face, name, and/or number appears. When it is your turn to speak, the facilitator will identify you and announce that you're unmuted for public comments. Once recognized and unmuted, please state your name and address. You will have up to three minutes to comment. We have no raised hands at this. Oh, we have one. Henry Zionic, you are unmuted and recognized.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, great. I'm at fifteen Holmes Court. I have two questions, both about our elementary schools. The first is about removing Friday from the six-day schedule. IEPs are typically written to describe the number of service hours for six-day cycle. That cycle is now stretched out by an additional day per week. I'd like to know how we're adjusting service hours and how IEPs are being changed based on the change to the schedule. The second is, I'd like to, you know, thank the board for including the requirement for 900 instructional hours into the reopening discussion. I did ask if it'd be included as an agenda item. So if possible, if the board could discuss the procedure and the timelines around policy 9340, and how an agenda item is accepted or denied when requested by a taxpayer. Thank you.
Any other public comment this evening? Thank you, Mrs. Zionic.
No more raised hands at this time.
Okay, with that, we will move on to the superintendent's report.
Good evening, everyone. And thank you for our parents and community members and staff members who are watching from home remotely. As the board chair said, since the last time we were here, we have now entered into our third week of in-person learning mode, and all back to school. And students, the students are tremendously excited to be back, and it's running successfully. And for the most part, for the most parts smoothly, there's continued to be bumps, but for the most part smoothly, people have settled in. I want to thank the teachers and the support staff, our clinical staff, for the tremendous efforts in trying to make this happen as seamlessly as possible, and that has been the case. And they've gone above and beyond and doing extra things to make things work for our students. And as the board chair said, I want to pay tribute to the kids, too, that've done a tremendous job. And just as a community in general, I think we'll try to rally around. If we don't rally around, we won't be in school, and the experiences for our kids and our seniors won't happen this year. And perhaps even with our best efforts, that's a challenge, but so far, so good. And we thank everyone, and I'll just remind everybody, if you don't mind, just that it is a community effort, activities that happen at the weekends just can help or hinder the progress. So again, thank you. It's nice to have everyone back, sort of for a second time. And every day's a good day that we don't have cases. We do have a number of virtual, sorry, the October, I just wanted to mention that the October open house, I think, went well in the sense of the videos that were done and so on and so forth. I think that they were generally, for the most part, I think, very most part, are well received. We have a number of parent informational sessions that are coming up next week. We have six sessions, each for each school, and also for support services. Dr. Kenefek, who is our medical advisor, and the local infectious disease specialist, Dr. Shaw, have put together a testing, contact tracing, and quarantine informational video. We did send out to parents to solicit questions, and that will be moderated by our Director of Health and COVID Compliance Liaison Officer, Alicia. We will be completely re-updating, and then we're in that process right now of the reopening plan because we've changed, you know, things have changed and been revised and modified along the way, and we're in a different phase, so that will be completed by this Friday. The budget season, believe it or not, is upon us, and our staff will feel that most significantly, they started this week, but they'll get directions for that particular process starting tomorrow. Ox Ridge Building Committee, we received the final approval from the state, so that was tremendous news. And the permissions have come forward to bid, and they've started that process. ONG has started that process. They had their first meeting today with some of the contractors to assess, just to go over some of the logistics and some of those bids. The portable classroom removal and library redesign is moving forward to the actual committee. The committee meets on Thursday morning, and so we look forward to hearing from Northeast Collaborative on their tentative feasibility study. The Policy Committee next meeting is Friday, October 23rd, and it looks like the Finance Committee meeting will be Wednesday, October 21st, November 3rd. As we know, it's Election Day, it's also Professional Development Day here. Our plans are well underway for that, and that will be a remote day of professional learning across the district for staff. And again, thank you just to everyone for all of their efforts in the reopening effort. Most of my updates, I'm, I'm sure, will be a Ryan reopening anyway, which we're talking about.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to the approval of minutes. It's requested that the board approve the minutes of the regular meeting held on September 22nd, 2020. May I have a motion to approve? That is Mr. Burke and Mrs. Stein, all in favor. That is unanimous. Thank you. And Board Committee reports, any reports? Mr. Burke?
The Policy Committee met on September 18th around the agenda to discuss that later, so I'll leave that till then.
Great. Just an update, I did send out to the board that working group was convened, a working group for the Communications Committee. It consists of Mrs. Stein, Mr. Maroney, Mr. Brown, and Mr. Burke. So if you all organize yourselves and let me know when you'd like to update us, that would be great. Any other Board Committee reports? Or Mr. Dineen?
Tyra Duke's mic's not on.
Sorry, thank you. So we're trying to organize and look at dates for probably be some type of virtual meeting to update the school community and the neighborhood on the Ox Ridge plan, especially as we move forward with potential shoveling in the ground. We're still working through some off-site parking and off-site dirt storage challenges, but those are moving forward.
Great, and as Mr. Dineen said, the House approved our funding and our reimbursement rate. It is now on to the government. Presentations and discussions, an update on reopening status and expenses. Dr. Adley and Mr. Roodel.
Shall we just put that up, please? Oh, we're here. Actually, with your permission and understanding, I might just give you an updated version that it will be posted. So we have YMCA updates and different things that have happened even since we published this, so if you don't mind, I'll just distribute that, is that okay?
Yep.
And we'll make sure that the community will be able to see it, and we'll make sure it's posted for people. And I'm bad at...
Why don't you go to that way and send the rest this way?
Give us a couple this way. Thank you.
And you'll email it to us, too?
Yes, yes, sure.
Do we have any more?
It just may be easier just to follow along a little bit. So as you know, we did reopen on the 29th, and I think for the large part, that was a success, very much for the last part, a successful reopening. And I think students and staff, even though anxious as everybody is, we're glad to be back and be with each other. And I just want to pay tribute to the kids again, and to the staff members for their extraordinary efforts in making this work. So just a couple of updates. Just remember that these updates are really updates from the last update, so I'm not really trying to repeat things if I can help it. Clearly, as I shared, the students were delighted to see each other. It has been a successful couple of weeks. Teachers are gaining skills and confidence in providing live remote instruction. And let me just say that it's challenging, it's not easy, it's difficult. And it's not as if our, I don't put that up as if our teachers can't do it. I just want everybody to recognize, myself included, how difficult it is having been in the classroom, and having had the cameras, and trying to sort of try to do things simultaneously. It's just not an easy task, and I just want to recognize that, and it's an ongoing process. And I appreciate all the efforts of the teachers as they've tried to incorporate that into their lessons. Special education services are being provided in school at this particular point. The remote learners sort of go up and down a little bit. It's also sort of a week removed of the data that we have to, this is official data that we have to report to the state anyway, so it's convenient. This may have represented some members of the community who decided, I'll just keep kids back to see how it goes, or otherwise. It's hard to get a wee read. The changes in the elementary grades in particular, I noticed, and we'll continue to sort of look at that. Attendance guidelines have been clarified this week, so what does that mean? Well, how do you move from one mode of learning to another mode of learning? Can I zoom in from the backseat of my car if I'm on my way to Vermont? Or some other scenarios? And I think our district has been very, very reasonable. By and large, we have said just for, if it's not a medical issue, by and large, we've given parents like 72 hours to sort of give us written notification. I think that's very, very reasonable. If you look around the other districts, it's a quarter, it's a semester, it's all sorts of significant length of time. And so we worked with the staff, with our medical staff, with administration, just to make sure that we solidify a consistent message as we go along, because we learn as we go here of what has been asked of us, and also what we have in place to support those responses. So particularly, you know, around sickness, because you want families to make good choices, and you don't want to punish that. So essentially, our nurses will be in close contact, and if they feel that they need to stay out and tell them to stay out, then we'll put them motion pretty much the next day. You've got to understand that some teachers aren't doing remote to be able to, you can't just call in like, okay, well, now five minutes, set up your thing, do your, get ready for it. Minimally, we got to give them 24 hours notice, and I think that's reasonable. So hopefully, that communication was clear and helpful to our community members. The 180 days and 900 hours, I'll just, I'll leave that to the end here, or the end of this slide. Preparations are well underway for the remote learning. We've engaged many teachers, team leaders, and classroom teachers to look at their final sort of revisions, often suggestions around the remote learn, because we could go to that at any particular time. We're ready to go to it. But Mr. Tramberg has been working with the staff just to make sure their fingerprints are represented in what actually goes out. So the 180 days and 900 hours, I will say this, it's a very fair question from the community, if you're following along with this, which we do closely. And it's a fair, reasonable question to ask for. It's a somewhat complex question a little bit. I will say, if I may, the parent, may I respond to this? Mrs. Zionic, is that okay, since you came on?
Well, I think the board at this point has this question as well, so it's best to respond to the matter.
The question submitted is a fair question. I do agree with the community members' analysis of the minutes, and so there's no question about that, we do agree on that. And generally speaking, whenever you submit, like for 900 hours to the State Department of Education, you basically drop out arrival times, snack times, lunch times, travel times. Those, that's generally what happens historically. So I do agree on that. A sort of editorial comment, if we were in full remote, you would be getting, actually, we'd be well over, well, at least we'd be over the 900 hours if we just closed down, bringing people back. There are things that go with that. So the big thing really is the staggered arrival times and the staggered departure times. So I have to work with contractual issues, I have to work with logistical issues, I have to work with health and safety issues to make sure that we keep the children physically distanced as best as possible. And when you add all of those up, it does show that we're beneath the 900 hours. However, there is contradictory information that has been distributed by the state. Addendum number 12, and they recognize that. Addendum number 12 talks about 177 days and four and a half hours of instruction. Well, if you do that, that's less than 800 hours. So they have distributed contradictory information to start with. I will share that I did contact the State Department of Education. I talked directly to the Commissioner several times and to his other staff. They are looking, their legal department is looking at that. I talked to them yesterday again, and they will get back to us with an interpretation. They actually understand the conundrum and the conflict and the confusion that they've actually put out. I will say that from my own experience with the other districts, we're well within what other people are doing, and then some. But that being said, it's a technical legal issue in the sense of the requirements that they've put out. And I would say that I would ask for a little bit of patience as the State Department responds, because I think it's important for them to respond. Should we need to make an accommodation, we'll make that accommodation. I'm not inclined just to throw out right randomly, okay, let's have the kids do some asynchronous work just to make up some hours. I would like a thoughtful reflection on that. There are things, we don't know which mode we're going to be in, so if we go back into remote learning, the hours can continue to increase. But I would like to see what their response is, because that's where the responsibility lies, to make a judgment on this, and go from there. I mean, essentially, we have 140 full days and 37 and a half days, and that was, that's an accurate count, and it's a reasonable way to calculate it. So that's kind of what I would ask the board. I'm certainly happy to entertain questions.
So just so the board is aware, the SDE has issued the requirement, it's in the statute, they've issued additional requirements related to the pandemic, and so we are waiting for an SDE, sorry, Connecticut Department of Education, we're waiting for the Connecticut Department of Education to issue a ruling for this year only, given the models. But they did preview all of our plans prior to this, and our plan was not rejected for any reason. I know they did not approve plans, but they were not, it was not rejected. So we're waiting for them to clarify their own legal mandates to us.
That is correct. And there are things, like a staggered arrival, a staggered departure, and for other schools, middle school or otherwise, increased passing time, there are all things that were not sort of, on the original hours, not accounted for, and they add up pretty quickly. So that's the direction I'd like to take, and I'd like to revisit this issue, and I'm happy to entertain clarifying questions and so on, if you'd like to do that. You can either do that now, or we can move through this presentation.
Well, I just think, since this is a big part of it, let's clarify this now, and then go on with the rest of the...
Sure.
Happy.
Mr. Burke?
So if I understand, we're waiting from the state for some clarification as to what the real minimum standards are. There's no dispute that right now we're around the calculation that was presented to us, or we're projected to that 700 hours or so calculation, but you're waiting to see what the response is from the state. I would say it would just be helpful, just as we go along, to clearly communicate to the community where we are with that status. So I think there's some parents who are very closely involved and watching, and some who are just out there expecting that what we do and what we execute will be sufficient. So I think it's just a very short, continuous update in terms of where we are with the hours and with the response from the state would be helpful.
Mrs. Ritchie?
I just, Dr. Adley, could you repeat the number of days and half-days that you stated earlier? I wanted to just jot that.
It's 140 full days and 37 half-days, just a card. Now, that's not including moving in, moving out of different phases, but at some point we'll have to.
So, Angel, I see your hand, one second. But to clarify, what we call a half-day is considered a day of instruction by the state?
Well, yes.
Yes.
I mean, it kind of sure...
So when we're talking about hitting the 177, I want to be very clear, a half-day counts, and those arrows are in to count. So what we're really looking at, in my understanding, is a ruling from the state on the 900 hours part of it, given the pandemic. Mrs. McCammon?
Can you talk a little bit about the impact on IEPs? The caller also mentioned, you know, the elementary school day and the way that we now have a half-day Friday, and how that works with the six-day schedule, that IEPs are built on a six-day schedule, and we're counting the days a bit differently. So would you please talk about the impact at the secondary and the elementary school level on IEPs?
Well, I will just say that IEPs will be compliant with IEPs, and with that, I'll turn it over to Shelly.
Is this mic on? So a six-day cycle, very often, I'll give you an example. I can tell you, students are receiving their services consistent with IEPs, or there's an IEP implementation plan. So if I'm a student and I have academic support three days a week, I have three times 30, I have speech two times 30, I have OT one times 30, I'm able to fulfill that, and we are providing services on Friday when appropriate. So we're able to do that. If there is a time that we can't do that, let's say a child has six days a week of a service, then there's an IEP implementation plan. So if the parents have any questions, they should reach out to their case managers, and we've made sure case managers have reached out to families, but we will redo that in case there's any communications, disruption in communication.
Any other, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So we are able to implement our IEPs.
Any other question? Mr. Seeny? Mr. Seeny?
Thank you, guys. Can you hear me?
I can.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. Are we committed? Yeah, thank you. Are we committed to the half-day Fridays throughout the entire school year at this point? Or maybe you can give us an update of what metrics might take us to a five-day, a full five-day school week?
Well, at this point, as part of the plan that we approved, that those half-days would be part of, part of the plan. The two things that would have happened during half-days, Mr. Seeny, were, A, the building to be cleaned, and B, professional learning for teachers, because it sounds like they're getting more professional learning there, but they're really not, because when we're cutting all this other time out, the things that really has come out of it are the PLC times and stuff that were already, were originally in the schedule, and now they're out of the schedule, and this is an opportunity to keep them remain there. And honestly, this is hard work, and I think this was a way to actually continue to support the staff and the professional learning around the work. And so I would anticipate and hope that they would stay. I do think there are different solutions to, if we have to do an alternative for some particular reason, I will say this, I believe that, you know, good faith and reasonfulness and so on is not technically satisfying the law to some, to a certain point. But I feel that we are well within, again, we're one of only a handful, if that, of people who have actually returned to five days a week in school instruction. Even though if we were out, we would have more than 900 hours. I'll tell you, the hours that the kids have in-person will outweigh the number of just contact hours remotely, as we've sort of heard, and I think intrinsically know, so... But anyway.
Can I just have one quick follow-up?
Mr. Seeny?
Yeah, I guess the question is, if we were to gloriously find that the pandemic is over sometime in the spring, would there be any plan to return to, you know, five days? Or I'm hearing probably not, or I know it's a what-if question.
Oh, if the situation changes, Mr. Seeny, to where this, I think you said that we were no longer in a COVID situation, then I think, then a full remote is certainly, or sorry, a full in-person normal schedule is quite plausible.
Mrs. McCammon?
Alan, on your point about what happens on Fridays, could you spend a little time thinking? Because when I hear PD, I think that you've spent that time, you know, with specific blocks of training for the teachers. But from what I just heard you saying, and from my original understanding of the plan for Friday, the part of that was more like PLC and planning and lessons to accommodate for the additional work to adjust to a remote environment. Can you spend a little time talking about what that Friday looks like and what you mean when you say PD?
Yeah, sure. It's, when I say professional development, I mean professional learning, and that can come in all shapes and sizes, and particularly the most powerful is internally, but it's both, and I'll let Chris share with what both of those are.
Good evening, everyone. Yes, it's definitely both. So it is the time for teachers to have PLC, because where that was built in their schedule during the week through having a common time through their specials, that wasn't possible with the new schedule we had to create, especially at the elementary level. So PLC is absolutely part of it, which is job embedded professional development at its finest. And we're also offering some mini PD sessions or pop-up PD sessions, really trying to respond to what teachers specifically said are some gaps in what they still need to know specifically related to technology. So we surveyed our elementary folks two weeks ago, and middle school and high school last week, so we're trying to provide just mini sessions, because these are things that don't take two hours, but we can integrate them in that day, so we can still preserve their collaborative time with their teams, as well as some professional learning at the same time.
Mrs. McCammon?
Do you mind giving some examples? What are some of the things that teachers are finding that they need to learn at this point?
So, I actually have that right in front of me. So Zoom, facilitating Zoom with your in-person class and those at home. Still refining some skills with CSO, looking ahead to remote learning, making sure we have the best assessment practices as possible should we be in a situation of full remote, making sure we have technologies that could provide information and students could share their learning that way. So some of those that we're looking at are NearPod, Book Creator, Flipgrid as well, continuing to figure out how we can use the IPVOS as strategically as possible. IPVOS are our document cameras, so there are many options and flexibilities. You can use it just as a document camera, you can use it as a camera that faces the teacher, one that faces the class. Sounds simple, but when teachers have two to three devices, they can use it in multiple ways in their classroom, so we're continuing to look at that as well.
Yes.
An example of some of our planning is how to conduct assessments, consistent with PPEs, and how it may change the parameter of the assessment, so we're working on training our staff to do that as well.
And I think not to be lost in this, as adding on to the PD, is that cleaning, that full thorough cleaning of the schools on the half-days. I think we've discussed how important that is, and we've heard from the community how important it is that they feel that the schools are clean from their children. So that's really, my understanding is, that's when that big thorough cleaning begins for the weekend.
Well, I'll add to that.
Well, I'll add to that, because that's another complexity. I will say that, can I take, just, if we tagline at the minute for our staff, a part of it is, they're working harder than they ever had, this is what they feel, but not doing as good a job, right? And I guess maybe we all sort of feel that a little bit, but that's, that's probably a true statement in a sense of like the feeling, and these opportunities on Friday are limited as they are, are very helpful. However, we also, perhaps we should have anticipated, but another thing that we're learning is, we can't really start the additional cleaning as well as we might. It seems like an obvious thing if people are in the building, right? So that is, that is problematic, and we want to, and I think we need to do additional cleaning right now, to be honest with you, on a continual basis. And you'll see tonight that we're talking about the acquisition of additional cleaning for Saturdays, because it's just necessary to do that. From a number perspective, we're just not able to keep up with it and do the level of cleaning, and additional cleaning that we need to do and would like to do. So you'll see that that's part of the discussion for tonight.
Any other questions on this topic before we move forward in that presentation? Great. Okay, Dr. Adley.
All right, well, we're moving forward with technology. The numbers are coming down, and I think they've dropped even a wee bit below the 140. So technology is moving in a right direction in terms of just a state of readiness and comfortableness with it. Remote users' issues are fewer than they have been, and that get better as we move, move through the process. We still need to provide some additional staff to support it. And we have done a little bit of outsourcing, and one of the ways of doing some stuff is the outsourced it as opposed to personnel. We have outsourced some of the Chromebook repairs, so that has been helpful to the tech, the technology department staff. Some things around health and safety, we have done the lunch, the lunch is going very well, and I want to thank people for their flexibility, understanding, as we've got down there, and also to the children. The weekend hotline, as we have spoke about, we've had one COVID case thus far, and we probably have about 13 to 15 people at any given time out of the school in quarantine situation. We have the video that's being composed at this particular time, and again, I have this on all the time, I'm appreciative of everybody's community in particular's efforts of, because what they do out there impacts us in the schools. You will see for the six feet, an additional potential expense that wasn't on the original sheet, that's on this sheet, for portable, sort of portable desks. Right now, some of the elementary kids are having Ox Ridge camp outside, and when they come inside, they're on the floors and so on and so forth, is to take the children off the floors primarily and give them a place to, a desk place to eat, eat their lunch. So you'll, you'll see that coming through. So a lot of the stuff that we had pre-ordered started to come in, nearly all of it's in and in place, so that's, that's good. We're in the process now of really sort of recycling and making sure that reorder materials, particularly around PPEs. You'll see the outside service here that I just talked about for Saturdays. The desk shield, just a wee reminder, one of desk shields, these are the things that give you the 3D right around you, and those will be primarily for elementary and middle school, we'll be using those. We have actually, we've explored it, since this, since this change was made even, we've, we've sort of secured those desks and tables, so we know what we're getting and where they are and how quickly they'll be here. The facility rentals at the YMCA and the town, there's been some discussion around that. I work very closely with Ms. Gardner, the executive, Jennifer, the executive director. Look, I can tell you that we have exhausted, these people are probably crazy, you know, mad at me here, my administration, the number of times I come around, can we do something different with this? Can we revisit this issue? Can we look at it at a different perspective? And any which way that I've looked at this, I even probably, in all fairness, probably gave the executive director a wee bit of too much hope at one point, when there, I thought there was a wee window of opportunity had opened, and subsequently it closed. And so I shared with the board some of the things, there's essentially a lot of the spaces are being used, and literally nearly every space is being used. The middle school gym have desks and tables up for lunches. When we expanded the six feet for lunches, we moved out into all these other spaces, the space for, at the high school, I mean, there's only one gym for PE, sports, all the rest of the gymnasium, they have two other gymnasiums, north and south are being used as, as a cafeteria and as our classrooms. One of the issues was that some of these elementary school ones are now going to transition into having desks in them. The requirements by the Department of Public Health for not just sweeping, but disinfecting afterwards is another challenge for our facilities department to keep up. I will say also, the health and safety, my priority is the health and safety of the kids and keeping the school open as long as I possibly can. And to do that, I really don't want to compromise the safety of the buildings. And honestly, by bringing more people into the buildings, there's a confidence level, and there's also a health and safety matter. Many, I think nearly every town surrounding us aren't renting out, and I think we've been trying to be very, very flexible, we, with the town and with the YMCA, we have kept the door open, and we shared that, look, we'll revisit this issue and happy to revisit this issue during the winter break to see if we can make some sort of accommodation. So, believe me, if I get, if I could make it work, I would try and make it work. But a lot of the space, all the space, some of the spaces also are for, are transitioned into a music space, but we continue to move the spaces around, but for the, for the most part, there really isn't a space. And even if we say, go ahead and, and then do it, you can't do it yourself. The Department of Public Health just recently, maybe just a week ago or so, issued some guidelines around basketball for a moderate level sport. But essentially, when we asked for a ruling on it, our local area superintendents, we got back from the Department of Public Health that they're not recommending competitive basketball games against each other, and because you wouldn't be able to wear your mask, but you have to wear your mask in order to play it. So there are complications upon complications. There is an ongoing policy and practice for the board where there's rankings, sort of priorities of who gets what and who, so that's also kicks in, that if I open that up, I would have to open it up to other people who would actually be looking to do it ahead of the YMCA. So there are many complications with it. I've just exhausted everything, to be honest with you. I'm nearly apologetic for saying I can't do it, but honestly, my priority though is to keep these buildings open as long as I possibly can, and to do that, I think at this point, this is the right decision to make.
So why don't we pause here again, because I think a lot of board members were contacted on this issue, even though it's really like a facilities usage issue. Do board members have any questions regarding our facilities rentals? Mr. Burke.
Just to give some clarity to the, the parents who have had kids participate in that program, can you just give an idea of what that expense is? If I'm hearing you correctly, it's enormously expensive to go in and remediate and clean those buildings, or to clean the gymnasium after basketball would have occurred and before you have kids back in there during the regular school time. So do you have an idea what that expense is?
I'll give, I'll give Rich the two-minute, two-second warning here, but in addition to the expenses, actually manpower to actually, to actually do it. Rich, did we look at that before? I think we looked at tentatively.
So it's largely manpower, you'd have to break down all the gyms, because they're now like auxiliary cafeterias. So you essentially have to have your custodial staff work seven days a week, and then after they break it down, then they'd have to clean. So they would really be on-call seven days a week, you know, probably 12 hours a day to make it work. They really are trying to, you know, focus on the cleaning Monday through Friday, and as Alan mentioned, we're really looking to try to get a cleaning service to do the cleaning that they can't really get to during the normal day.
Any other questions on this issue? I think we're going to hear a little bit more about some of the financial issues regarding this later in the presentation, as I page through very quickly. But I do think the community was asking board members, and Besser from the superintendent and Mr. Roodel, who have assured me that they have talked to the Y and tried to find any and all available way to make this happen if they could, and it just looks like this is just unfortunately, a very unfortunate cost of the pandemic at the moment. So I appreciate your willingness to relook at this, and I appreciate that for us sitting here, our first priority is keeping these schools open as long as we can. All right, we will move on. Oh, I'm sorry, Mrs. McCammon.
Thank you, Alan, for the level of detail, and Rich, for the level of detail about what went into your thinking. We do get approached by members of the community, and so the more we know and can help either understand what the questions are or what the answers are, it's greatly appreciated. So thank you for taking the time to go through it and with some thoroughness. I appreciate that.
Just be, just be confident that for, for many of these issues, similar types, we're never just going to say no. If we can help, we can help. But I'm saying that I understand it can be, it's perhaps hard to understand what the reasons are in this, you're told, so. Okay, we're good. So we've, we have some riders who have opted back in again, you wouldn't know it when you look at the buses sometimes, but they've opted back in, which is a good thing. Arrival and dismissal logistics, there are improving around the district in particular. Middle school have done a very nice job over there facilitating that quicker. It's just a tough situation, and I give the police, as the board chair did, all the kudos. The police chief today came up with me in the pouring rain to stand outside Ox Ridge. Ox Ridge is the most difficult one, particularly around afternoon dismissal. So as of this afternoon, one of the things, at least for the temporary time until we break ground over there sometime in November, we might create a loop actually on that particular field, if you can think about the, the field a little bit, to get them off Mansfield Avenue as best as possible. But the police have been tremendously helpful, as has our staff, who literally like trying to, trying to direct traffic and so on and so forth, and it's a wee bit of a maze, to say the least, but we're making, we've made progress across the place, and again, Ox Ridge is, is the one that we're trying to sort of close out if we can.
Mrs. Ritchie, just to follow up on Ox Ridge, as we start construction, I don't know exactly when shovel hits in the ground, but is it going to become more of an issue there?
Oh, yes. Oh, listen, we'll have to be off that field because.
Right. That's why, when you said that, that's why it popped into my head.
We have a limited, we have, if I encourage, I guess I'm allowed to encourage the parents, feel free to take the bus as much as you can, that would be appreciated, or arrive at Ox Ridge, just a tad later, because you'll be just as quick getting the children out. But, but anyway, that, we continue to work on that.
So Deb, I'll just add to that, that the focus has been in the planning, that we maximize the space there for teachers, administration, and parents, and minimal amount of equipment or parking around construction. It's just a tight site, but that always has been the focus, is how, and there's work going on right now as to how quickly we can adjust the lights on that road to speed up kind of in and out there too. So it's a constant focus.
So the in-person model is up and running, but that also means that, you know, we have still full remote learners there, and there's three parts of that, as Christopher discussed last time, are three parts of those lessons, which is the instruction, the practice, and then the recap by the teacher. We are in phase three right now. We've moved, we've moved through, sorry, phase four, we've moved to, because this particular week. So this particular diagram that we saw the last time, the right-hand side where is in full operation at this particular moment in time. And I think that that has been certainly going better and smoother, and we continue to try and support those remote learns, but I just, I'll just reiterate, it's just very, very difficult to do.
So I'm going to take a pause here about remote learning. There's lots of questions. So Mrs. Ritchie, just following up on that, are we getting feedback from parents, how it's going?
So we sent out, we sent out a survey just last, well, Friday, was it Friday? We sent out a survey, remote learners, and have received a number of those back right now. The feedback also will be provided next week when we do some of the, because that's not just for people who are in, in person school. I don't know if you've, I know you've read some of them, Christopher, do you have any takeaways at the moment, or?
I took a look, we have 74 families responded, which represents about 100 of our remote learning students. Overall, at a glance, there is, if you're looking at it as a satisfaction survey, there was 65% of families felt that their students had the resources necessary to be successful, and they understood the expectations, and then others were neutral, and then there was the disagreement and strongly disagree. If they strongly disagreed or disagreed, we were asking what that experience has been like as to why. It was student engagement, the feeling of disconnection from peers, dropped Wi-Fi, and just some trouble with technology. There was some challenges with the Wi-Fi dropping at the high school specifically, that was addressed last week, so there, I think that is under control there. So I'm, it's still new, there's still more coming in, but that's the initial read that I had, and they provided some great responses as to what's, what's working, what's not.
So are we seeing anything of people, are we seeing any kind of similar groupings? People who strongly agree and think it's going well, or disagree at certain age groups? Can we pinpoint it? Like, is the upset factor at the younger levels, is the, can we pull any data from it? And it might be early enough, but then I would ask maybe at our next meeting, when, when the surveys had some time to roll out, we hear a little bit more of the data.
Yes, I can break it down more.
Of utmost urgency. So the help desk is the, you know, is the way to put it in, but sometimes I've been in a classroom where a teacher actually has to stop and problem-solve herself, right? Or himself in the classroom whenever someone can't get on. It's very difficult, because you say 2:00, we're doing mathematics, and if you don't get on at 2:00, I mean, not only does it throw the remote learner off, it throws everybody else off in terms of, so it's a difficult situation in that regard. Priority-wise, the teacher and, well, the teacher would also report that immediately to you, and the, the parent would report it through the help desk. Those are the two main ways, Dennis. I think, I don't think they're slower by any means. Are they getting, are they faster? But I think they get the attention, like, okay, we've had, we've had, if we get something in from a remote learner, it's getting attention, because exactly what you say, it's, it's their lifeline to the classroom. I feel pretty confident about that.
Okay.
Mrs. Stein. Chris, could you just let us know, when you did the survey, is there anywhere where parents, particularly of the elementary age children, had an opportunity to talk about their feeling of how much live instruction they're getting versus, you know, we had heard some complaints from parents about that, and I'm just curious if we have any feedback on, you know, the quality of live instruction, particularly at the elementary.
Yes, we did ask a question about that in relation to number of connections you had with the teacher that week that the survey was given, so I can share all of that too.
Great, thank you.
And I know this is preliminary, but 50% of the people that responded at that time said that they had frequent communication with the teacher.
Did I see another hand? Mrs. McCammon.
Chris, I'm curious to know if there's any look at how, I have two questions, if there's any look at how collaboration works with any of the kids, it's not specifically mentioned, and I would think it would be a little different at the elementary school level than at the secondary school level, so that's really my, sort of the second half of my question, which is, you know, for our younger learners, a lot of it is receiving and then kind of doing your work, but for our older learners in particular, where we would be work, where part of the work would be more of a focus on collaboration, and maybe you're doing teamwork. Do we have any, do we have any plan for that, whether it's a breakout room on Zoom or anything like that? Again, I realize it may only be one learner at home, but how are we making them feel part of the classroom with their work?
So I'm going to connect that to the question you asked earlier as to what are teachers asking for. That's a very specific thing that we are going to address on our Election Day PD, is managing small group instruction, and not only, it's also a And that all, it's also a challenge for students that are in school because they're now sitting in rows and need to be socially distanced. And we're used to pulling students for small groups and turning desks and collaborating. So a part of that will be technology, and a part of that is just understanding the health and safety protocols so we can have people working together safely. And the third part to that is, yes, so students at home can be zooming with the students that's in class, so they feel that they're more connected.
Thank you.
Mr. Maroney.
Going back, Alan, you had mentioned about students who are sick and not being able to access remote learning that day. But you said if it's 24 hours, then they'll be able to access. Could you just go through that again? Because I know there's been some confusion on whether you can or cannot.
Sure. So if a student is quarantined, they go on automatically then, right? So that's pretty straightforward. If a student is, let's say someone is sick for another reason. Let's say maybe just stomachache or something that may or may not be, or maybe it's not typically COVID-related specifically, if there is such a symptom, but I'm sure there are, toothache or otherwise. So they would talk, they would talk to the nurse, right? And if the nurse, if the nurse put them, said that they needed to stay home, right? If they said they needed to stay home, then we would give the teachers at least 24 hours' notice to actually connect without allowing that connection to take place.
Okay, but if a child wakes up with a fever, they can't access remote that day, but if they still have a fever the next day, they could access remote learning?
So they would be able to access remote learning within like three days.
Okay.
Yeah, within about three days.
Which I will say, I think is important, although I'll get back. Mrs. Stein, sorry, sir, your hand, then, Mrs. McCammon. At the high school, missing school days, certainly, I would think if someone is sick, we don't want them to feel that they need to hop on remote. They should take care of themselves and get better. The other thing is to miss a day of school is almost like missing two days of school, now that these periods are 85 minutes. So we've heard a lot about competing issues and stress on students. Mrs. Stein.
I was just going to echo what you were saying. I think we're also forgetting, a sick day is a sick day for a reason. Under normal circumstances, kids who are sick may not be able to learn, and they may need a day to be home and rest and sleep. And I do worry a little bit about in our town, right? This need to sort of always do. I think we have to keep in mind, there are some kids that are going to be sick and going to need a sick day, or two sick days or three. If they're out with the flu, last year, they would be out for four or five days with no school. So I just think we have to keep that in the back of our minds. And I do worry that, Alicia, I'm going to say it again, I say it every meeting, between the hotline and now this, you're going to be really overwhelmed with phone calls of parents saying, I want my kid to access remote learning. And so just please raise your hand if you need more help or more support because we are behind you.
Mrs. McHale.
Oh, sorry.
Dr. Adley, Alicia did want to speak, just, I don't know if she.
Sure.
That's fine, sure, of course.
Mrs. Kasucci.
Okay. To answer the question about, oh, sorry, moving to remote learning. The nurses are calling home and talking to families. The first day they're out, like we said, it's really hard to switch it in the morning. You know, and because we've had a lot of phone calls to make, it may take us till 10 or 11 o'clock to finish calls. So it's hard to get kids moved to remote learning the first day. And then when we assess the symptoms that they're having, if they're, you know, really feverish and, you know, tired and uncomfortable, it's, they are considered absent, and they shouldn't be hopping onto remote learning. But if they have mild symptoms and parents are, and kids are trying to do what we ask, which is to stay out and kind of give it a few days and see how things progress, and maybe if they need to be tested for COVID, that that's done, that they're able to move to remote learning if they're not, you know, so ill that they can't, they wouldn't attend school in a normal year. So we're trying to kind of shake that out a little bit and see how things go. But we do need that, you know, at least a day to kind of get them into the remote learning mode. And that seems, we've really started that late last week and early this week. It seems to be working okay. And then, I'm sorry, oh, as far as help, so far, we've been pretty good. But I will let you know, but I have a lot of nurses who are willing to help me out on the weekend. So I think we're good.
Just in the district, I think, and I think as a board, we feel pretty, what we want to reassure parents and ask the administration's help on is that it is okay for your child to be sick. It is going to happen. We just want to balance pressures. I think there's a lot of pressure, especially hearing it around the high school, for what does makeup work look like? How do I get to my teacher when I only see them every other day? Or every other day now? So just, we want parents to know, and I think, not speak for the administration, but we would, we would ask that you help confirm that we are here to kind of help your kids through this process. Teachers are willing to work with you, administration's willing to work with you. But it is okay if your kid is sick one day. I mean, and that they should rest and be well and get healthy again so they can learn.
Correct, and it's okay if they don't get online for that particular day also.
Okay. Mrs. McCammon.
As someone with a lot of little kids with runny noses, I will say that I'm grateful that you've taken a look at how to get some of those kids online within 24 hours. Because I think, you know, again, little kids are prone to a lot of those more mild illnesses that we would more traditionally send them to school for, and that you might not under, under the COVID environment. Similarly, we do have some kids with chronic illnesses, whether that's allergies, or ulcers, or acid reflux and things like that, that might cause similar symptoms, and the parent is going to struggle with how to handle it. You know, if you've got a child with acid reflux who shows up with a stomach ache, do you keep them home that day? Or do you, you know? So again, I think it's important that we've worked on how to create an environment for kids who are still able to access their learning. I agree, Heidi, that we don't want kids who should be resting, working. But we have some who are able to work. So thank you for thinking about those.
And thankfully, we're very appreciative that we have nurses who will intercede there and make that judgment. And honestly, we depend on them to do that. Because again, I'm not a nurse practitioner, otherwise. So it's very, it's very helpful that we have nurses, appreciative of that they will actually, you know, follow up and make those assertions because we need them to.
And based on that, parents should be talking actively with nurses, I think, if they've got questions about what's appropriate.
Yes.
Mr. Denis.
I don't think we need a long, I don't think we need any dialogue about it, but I'll.
Do you need you to speak in the, thanks.
Yeah, I don't think we need a long dialogue, but I'll throw it on the table because it's come up as we crash into winter in November. But snow days, ice days, storm days, people are going to say, what are we going to do? Can we go to remote learning? So I think we have to understand from the administration, you know, how that's going to work.
Yeah, the State Department took a wee lead on that this past week, and has approved that as an option.
Why don't we look for an update of that at a future meeting? And hopefully, we don't have snow in between. I think that's a good idea, and certainly a topic on people's minds, and certainly. We'll move on to special education and communication.
So the in-person student assessments are happening in school, and the PPTs continue to happen remotely, only because people who are not staff, community members aren't really coming in the building. That's just primarily the reason for that. We have a number of coffee houses coming up, and there are some secondary ones there that I left off inadvertently, so I apologize about that, Shirley. Special education workshops are also coming up next week. And the professional development continues along the two areas that were to be continued for this particular year. We've got Wilson training for introductory, our cohort, one group of CESS facilitators and so on, who are part of that, and then a new cohort will be joining. And we will have the workshops. I think March, is it March, who's coming back? Doctor.
If I may just add to that, Dr.
Doctor, right, Dr. Sisneri, yep.
Dr. Maroney will be coming back in the third. And interesting, and most importantly, she's working with our staff on adapting to instruction and co-teaching in a COVID model.
So around communication, we've tried to incorporate some suggestions from the board, and some of those were around community opportunities to have input. So we've scheduled some of those, both for support services, the regular schools, in terms of just the principals at the schools and the central, we're going to have central services administration there to ask questions. We're going to give as much time as possible for community members to ask questions. So we're not just going to dictate the whole thing, but we'll open it up for questions. We have the video, we have, hopefully, you've sensed a good lot of communication coming from the schools. Central services will continue to communicate accordingly also. So those are just a couple of the additional outreaches that we have planned, have already conducted and continue to conduct. Teaching and learning, this room in here is used for assessment. That's going well, an assessment center for our remote learners who come in. I think our parents have received that extremely well, and it's been utilized well. We're in our first sort of window of assessments. The technology skills, we continue to understand that on any given day, you could transition from one mode to another mode. I used to think that we would, we would maybe just go from, potentially go from where we are to all remote. I more and more think maybe, maybe it's plausible if we have to go something, we may even go back to hybrid. And that's more plausible now than I thought that it might be. I'm not wishing that, I'm not saying that's what's going to happen, but I'm just saying that I didn't think it would, I didn't think there would be a scenario where we would even look at that, but that's not out of the realm of possibility. I say that because the children who are in school right now, the kids, we have to prepare for them to be out at any particular point again. So we're integrating those skills and practices again so that if they have to step out tomorrow, they haven't forgotten everything of how to do the work and so on, particularly around access to technology. Staff, we've shared this information before, about 14 teachers. We've started a little bit for one Spanish vacancy. We have our administrator covering that. We thank her for the coverage she's just doing at the moment. We have a number of absences now, understandably so, that are attributable to quarantining. That's different than we first set out. I want to pay the tribute to the teachers again for stepping up and doing class coverage for their peers. You know, when you're doing it for your peers, you're going to another cohort potentially. So that just is an added complication, so we appreciate all our efforts they're doing there. And we, teachers are, teachers who are quarantined are also permitted to teach remotely. That's different than having teachers who teach remotely permanently just outside of being quarantined. And that is going, I know that's difficult, too, for teachers, but that's helping run in right now.
Yes, Mrs. Ritchie.
So if someone is out quarantined and teaching remotely, then obviously there's a substitute in the classroom monitoring those kids that are in the classroom.
Yes, our teacher, our teaching assistant or substitute, yes.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Burke.
Just for planning purposes for our parents, if conditions were to change and a hybrid situation became advisable, or even full remote, what do you think the leave or lag time would be from the realization that it has to happen in communicating? Because I think what parents need to know is that, will it be the next day? All of a sudden, they have to arrange for coverage at home? Or do you have any idea of what kind of window we might be able to give?
Yes, like all of above. Because there might have time that our nurses have to spend, you know, with tracking. It could be 8:00 at night that we all come around administratively to go, okay, where are we, how many people are we out? We may have to close one school, one class, or the whole district at a moment's notice. I don't want to do that. Hopefully, that's not the way it works out, but that's not, it's not inconceivable that that could happen. So I would ask our parents to be prepared for everything. We'll try and give them as much lead time as we possibly can. But, but just the amount of time it takes to follow up with contact tracing and so on, so forth, it just, it just sort of depends.
But to that question, and all the work you're doing now, certainly, last spring, when we had, when this decision was made, it was abrupt. But you feel more prepared in terms, and I know for parents, for all of us, it would be difficult to plan, but in terms of the district turning education over, you feel that, do, how do you feel that will go, that transition? Versus last time, we had to learn as we go and really create a whole new program.
Our work, like, as much as everything is challenging, we're light years away from that. And we're ready, we're ready to go to remote learning with the staff's input into, and into the plans and revisions that we have. But we're so much, we're ready to go with technology, ready to go with that. Everybody's ready to go with that.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Mrs. McCammon, did I see your hand up?
Yeah, sorry. Just quarantine teachers are permitted to teach remotely for both secondary and elementary?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, athletics and then expenditures.
Well, we're following, sometimes people get out ahead of things. That doesn't always help. When CIC or FCIC get out ahead of things and before they tell, or literally simultaneously when they tell athletic director or superintendent when things happen. But anyway, look, again, I've used that sort of reasonfulness. I use it in the sense of the schedule that we've developed for the kids to be back. I also use it in the sense of spectators, right? In terms of, can we revise some practices? I've used it with the YMCA, I'm trying to be reasonable where we can. So FCIC come out with some of its regulations in terms of spectators. So we've sort of embraced those and think that they are reasonable, right? So essentially, it's for students, for varsity students, you've got two passes that you can use as a family type thing to go to varsity games here and socially distance. We will allow two visitors from reciprocal schools to visit. The volleyball, just because it's inside, I think there's only two, I think there's only two passes for each family, but there's, we're not having visitors for that. So that was the recommendation there. I think the only one who's really suffering badly is actually swimming. If I'm correct in that, that they don't have, that they're not allowing spectators at all for swimming. But we've tried to, like, we started from no people on campus to this, but we're learning as we go.
But we now, the administration also put out on the JV and freshman.
Oh, yes, we have, yes, right, we did have some JV and freshman, but I think it's still two themselves as well. I don't think it's, there's any for inside, but I think there's two for them also. So, so we're trying to be responsive to the community and be reasonable, particularly around the outside space and activities. The seven-person seven is up and running. After it's a football game at the weekend, it's not a, it's not a school sponsored event, just FYI, but that, they're running, so.
Small plug for those boys, they beat New Cannon, just saying. It was kind of nice to have a little bit of that back again.
I want to thank members of the DAF because they've done a terrific job expanding their tape and streaming of things, and they're going to continue to do that. So we thank them for that. We go to the related expenses at this point. But actually, if I just, I'll just skip one, I'll come back to this. May I do that? Just, I'll just, this is the data that we have for, and then October 6th, I put on here, just, I tend to state the information, so I just put the information on for you. So less than 10 is the guideline across the state of Connecticut. For Darien, for our population, that would be less than 2.2 for Darien, which is 15 cases. So basically, seven days average would be 15. So instead of that 10, that would have to be 15. Currently, we've got two cases. And the moderate, the moderate would translate into you'd have to have between 15 and 38 cases. And again, we currently have two. So I just sort of put that on there. Connecticut is 6.8, which is still low, Turfey 5.4, which is still in the category, low category. And I don't know if anybody has any questions about that, but we continue to be in close communication with the Department of Public Health. This is the COVID related.
Just a quick question.
John.
Yeah, sorry about that. So from my understanding, if you look at the state kind of guidelines, we're going to be looking at a broader area than just Darien. I mean, you know, Darien's one of the factors, but given the volatility of the small, you know, community, I thought the state wanted us to look at a broader category. Can you maybe talk about that, Dr. Adley?
John, you just, you just cut out. We, but man, I don't know if I heard the questions clear.
I think John's asking, in terms of these numbers in state guidance, is it going to be Darien-specific? Or at one point, the state was talking about looking at Fairfield County or towns, similar towns, or neighboring towns within Fairfield County? Is that your question, John? So have you heard any guidance?
Basically.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, sorry.
No, you just keep cutting in and out, so I'm trying to, I'm trying to translate. I think John's saying.
You have translated well.
Yeah. Will it be Darien? Will it be Darien specific? Or are, have we kind of come up with what our town cohort might be, has the state issued that guidance?
Uh, no, it's, that's why I put this Fairfield County one up there. It drops off Hartford and so on and so forth, just to get this local area, so to speak. But I can certainly complete that if, if supportive on the information. I, I think it's, there's no specific guideline around that. I do think we triangulate the data and the information as, as best as possible. Whether that be from our surrounding district, I, I meet every week with the superintendents of the surrounding districts. The information that we meet with the State Department or we're on that webinar. Alicia and I every Tuesday morning, Alicia's on every one of them, and I'll go to some of those. So we're in close contact with the Department of Public Health every week, as with our local officials, so it's a matter of triangulating the data. It's a wee bit like when we have a case, we will go and triangulate the data and then how far expensive do we need to be for quarantine and so on? We'd do the same, we would do the same here, if the spike. You know, if we had a big spike in the, in the town next to us, it wouldn't necessarily knock us out, so to speak. I mean, we, we are, right, but it would certainly raise your attention as to what might be coming our way. But so, so there's no specific guideline around the state regarding that, other than to look carefully at the, at the trends and be planned for, for first things. I think, I think that answers your question, Mr. Sean. So here's a COVID related expenses.
John, are you, was that more, John, are you done? Oh, it's a thumbs up, I think, okay.
So this has been updated since it was published. Sorry, since it was published over the weekend, and the additional updates you'll see in, in, is the middle sort of table, so to speak. And you have your adjusted totals there. So I walk over all the details in that, we do have, in, in a part of your packet, you have the information, the detailed information. We outline which were new expenses, which were, which were recurrent expenses. So I'll just say the additional expenses, YMCA facility, there's an indication from the executive director that. For swimming, that's what it might, that's what it might cost us. For gymnastics and for boys swimming, there is no expense submitted at this particular point. That it might be, if, if that needs to take place. We certainly, analysis was done if we had to. Charge accordingly for people to use the, the basketball, if they had to use it. I'll leave it at that for the minute, that probably will get more complicated and need to get with it. But the YMCA is sixty-seven for the, for the girls' swim season. If, if that's, if that's, if that's the charge, that, that's what it would cost us. Lunch tables I just shared, that's for the primary school, additional PPEs and that getting into the cycle of ordering more. And the Saturday contracted cleaning, look, this. Everybody in, in the facilities department is doing a tremendous job, but there's just not enough staff and there's not enough. And trying to keep up with the cleaning that we need to do for our own staff and our students. This is something that we actually, we need to do. I will continue to talk about that, that there's twelve FTEs in here. And I shared that under seven, on, and the communication with the board. There are three campus monitors at the high school, you know that we do have. The kids, the kids go outside more, we have a couple of tent areas there, and they'll help with monitoring, and also help with arrivals and dismissal. We have campus monitor at the middle school, that's a huge middle school. And the additional campus monitor would be very helpful, there is a tent at the back. I don't know if you know, but there's a tent at the back of the school that is used all day long. There's also a staff place, I'd say, for a tent that's used all day long, this also help up with supervision. And it'll also help with, one, one of the things that the administration has done a great job with, their middle school kids, when they come out of classes. I mean, trying to get the kids to separate a little bit is just, I mean, it's just hypothetical to what they want to do and what they do do. So Miss Summers has been very conscientious and administration over there of trying to be present and. Particularly in that area, sort of like encouraging the spacing when they come out of classes, that this, this person would also help a little bit with that. The two informational technology technicians, I've shared with before, the need, just because the ticket doesn't go down, doesn't mean that these aren't necessary. Because the additional computers that we've deployed, we just don't have anybody on site. And these people being on site at the elementary schools would be helpful. And then we got six lunch monitors, look, in order to pull off this spacing down the stretch. This is absolutely crucial to it, that's the only way I can describe it, because otherwise it's just not going to work. You need the level of supervision in these additional spaces and big spaces. So it's the, the staff, the administration have like worked through the conundrums. At the moment, staff stepping up, administration, but you can't have administration in the lunchroom like completely for three hours every single day. So people are stepping up and doing what they have to do at the moment, but these are critical positions. And that's why I showed, I shared with the, the board in advance a little bit. And yes, I'm looking for the board's pass it or otherwise approval of understanding of these positions. I can talk further about them, but you sort of see what they are there. We've gone from two million, just over two million to two million eight. And then in the last day or two, now we're at two million nine, as, as reflected in this. PowerPoint slide at the moment. I'll leave it there, I think.
So that's offset by our forty-two we receive in grants. So what I'd like the board to spend a little bit of time here, because I do need to go to the Board of Finance and give them an update on October twentieth. So at the moment, adjusted with the grants, we're looking at two point four two. So board questions, let's press upon this now. So we feel good such that I feel like I can go forward and deliver. Mr. Burke?
Uh, understanding that it's to be determined, but since we're going to be talking with the Board of Finance shortly. Do you have a ballpark on what the Saturday contract to cleaning could be?
I don't know if we have heard anything, I don't think we even heard anything today, did we, Richard?
So we're hoping to have a walkthrough with one of the companies tomorrow to get a firmer idea. I would anticipate it's full year, it would be a six figure.
Six figure?
Yeah.
Is, six figures, there's a lot.
Yeah, there's a lot of figures.
I think there's a lot of figures between.
I'd say the lower end of six figures as opposed to the higher end of six figures.
Okay, so what I'm going to ask is when you do that walkthrough, and once you get some color on that, to put that out to the board. Because I want the whole board to be apprised, I don't want them to hear about it in the Board of Finance meeting of what that would be. Other questions? Mr. Denise?
So thank you, Rich, for all the level of detail and all the hard work that goes around this. Um, one thing, one thing, can you, I think more detail is always better, especially going, you know, to the Board of Finance and having a conversation. Stuff like, because I'm sure it's significant, costs associated with the tents, where is that built in here?
Uh, so it's a facility.
Okay.
Only a few thousand dollars.
Okay.
It shows to rent the test for first.
Sure.
So it's likely we're not going to have this happen in winter. In the winter, but it is built in facilities, we did include, we have included the finance committee kind of line item detail. So there is a line item in the reopening expenditure.
Yeah, they'll, they'll get the detailed version. On a go-forward basis, you know, you look at lunch tables are said, PPEs is going to be a continuing expense. So we're at two four two now, what's the projection? You know, if you, if we stayed in this model and everything stayed the same, but we stayed in COVID. You know, what's the projection look like out toward the end of the school year?
In terms of the lunch tables?
No, 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 that's a fixed cost, I get it, but you're going to have to continue to buy PP and E equipment. You're going to have to continue to clean the facilities, you may have additional technology you need, you may have additional materials. So do you have some type of forecast beyond the two point four?
So we have included within the forecast for like custodial supplies, so that has their whites, things like that. So we had about a hundred and twenty-five thousand in the line item called custodial supply. We haven't spent a hundred and twenty-five thousand, so that's built into the forecast that we're going to continually reorder whites on a bi-weekly basis. Continually order like micro fiber racks.
Okay, I saw you hand this up, Mrs. Stein?
So I'm going to channel former board member Krista McNamara, if you're watching, saying your question, which I know you're thinking. Given the YMCA facility use, I do think it's appropriate to have it in COVID related expenditures. Has any thought been given to, similar to our other facilities usages? A split between parents and the district in paying? I wouldn't say necessarily at this point, because I know swimming is mid, I believe. Girl swimming, Deb Wright is swimming now and boys is in the winter. But should it come up that they're going to ask for gymnastics or boys swimming or say the pandemic goes into next year? I do think it's something we need to consider, given how we handle other sports. Or if alternatively, the Y finds other basketball space and decides not to continue their, their, you know, facilities exchange with us. I do think, given how we treat other sports, we should keep that in the back of our mind.
That's a good point for budget, and I think the, as part of the budget process, those particular sports were being looked at as to a fair, like, to bring back during the budget process. What is a fair representation?
I don't think it's fair to spring it on parents without notice, I, I, but I think it's something we should think about.
So to that, we've always, we've actually really not put a dollar amount on this facilities exchange. So I guess I would ask in your conversations with the Y, should this come to pass? Should they feel the need to assess this be really to kind of? Have some good, clear conversations around how we're coming up with these numbers, because we haven't yet done that for basketball. And so I'd like to keep this relationship, I do think this is a, a COVID incidence. I think we want the Y back as a great town partner and doing for our kids. These, these numbers are big, and I think it's our, our job as a board to look at that and just understand how the numbers we're coming up with. And, and then how we might need to similarly look at numbers.
I think if you, if you had similarly looked at numbers, it would be a huge expense for the YMCA for their basketball. I mean, I'm just, I'm just saying, if you, if you didn't look at those, that that would be a, that's a huge number.
Yes, that's my feeling too, so I'm trying to go about this as judiciously as possible. Recognizing taxpayer dollars and/or parent contributions who are also tax dollars incurring expenses. Mrs. McCammon?
Using technology as an example, I would love to talk about what information is planned to bring to the Board of Finance. So for example, you know, this is, this is a great high level information. You sent us some backup, which I would love for you to walk through, because there's some pretty compelling numbers.
Yes.
In there, so I'd love to, if you could talk to us about what those numbers are, and then talk about how we're going to go to the Board of Finance. What kind of information do you currently have planned? Just to make sure that the board is all on the same page about what the plan is.
So what would go to the Board of Finance would be a, a version of a memorandum that come from the board. And the detailed spreadsheet that is, is part of tonight's memorandum, that. The October eighth memo, so that is played out now. What I need to make sure is, is really that there's an understanding of the FTEs. We have started to indicate where we would transfer. The under enrollment sections that we have, that we would transfer those in, that's part of the memorandum. We would flag these new, these new expenses at this particular point. We would also at least indicate potential savings. But those savings would come back through the finance subcommittee, but, but certainly our memorandum here outlines some potential savings that we see. And if it show just the expenses, how did we get from, you know, originally the two, two million? And how did we get to a two eight figure tonight? And those are, those are outlined in this memorandum in terms of staff and the contractor services. And, and just one sort of net between benefits and curriculum development and materials that sort of nets out. But, so we would give it, we would give a detailed discussion, the Board of Finance Chair has a working knowledge of, of the original. The original worksheet, and so those things that are new, we will highlight them as being new, as we have for the board this evening. And give an indication of what we're beginning to transfer as savings, whether it's the, the sections for enrollment. Or whether it's potential savings that we've outlined here.
Mr. Burke?
I apologize to Charlie if I missed this, but with regard to the three FTEs up at the high school. Are these positions that have already been filled, and I know it says campus monitors, but, excuse me, what exactly are they doing? Are the kids not socially distancing, is there, what, what instruction are they getting from these monitors?
So right now, we're working on our wee skeleton crew until we get permission here to do a hiring after the year. They would be doing additional safety, fracturing and supervision around because. We've got the tents and the kids are right there permanently, we've got the, the kids are outside all the time at this particular point. I just think it leaves additional, additional setups, additional assistance in terms of supervision. And they would also do some, they, they would, they would cross over some things, they would duplicate it into lunch supervision also.
So, Mr. Denise, I see you, I just, you're picking up on that point. I would just want to make sure that any of these hires at the moment, given that they're COVID related, are one-year hires? Or, or this school year's hire?
Well, they, they currently are, I don't know if they'll lose some people, I'll look, they'll say, well, no, they currently, they currently are. I don't think anybody's committed to anything beyond, we'd, we'd be committing to anything beyond this year.
Yeah, I mean, hopefully, hopefully we're cleared up, but if COVID continues, that's a different, a different scenario. But let's say they are, they are COVID related, so they are here for the duration of the pandemic, which at the most is a school year at the moment. Mr. Denise?
So I think to follow up on that point, the one thing that popped into my head in terms of going to the Board of Finance is. On the additional two FTE technicians, you talk about. Having approximately twenty-one hundred student devices, which is an increase of twenty-five percent from last year. An additional hundred percent more staff with devices. So I think we have to think about, are those two FTE technicians again for this year and for COVID? Or is this something you're assessing that we will see in next year's budget in terms of? What we've done with technology and the technology support that you need? Because I think we should, if that's going to be the case, okay, but then define what FTEs or specific COVID end of year were done? And what we're building in now that we may see next year.
So in the budget, you will see, you'll see the technology assistance in the budget. It'd be nice to have them permanently at this particular point, I, I don't want to overstep. My bounds in terms of, of, of working outside the budget process for now, the COVID related. But they will definitely, the, the COVID has shown us, highlighted some things where we need some, some system support, right? It's highlighted some things we can do differently.
But you, but yes, definitely, just to be clear, they're going in, they're going, those two FTEs are in specific COVID related, to Tara's point. What, ending at the end of the school year? If that's something you need, you'll bring it to us in the budget.
If I could translate between the two of you, I think, I think. I think what I'm talking about, what Duke's talking about, is before we go through, but when we go forward to the Board of Finance. These are needed because of the situation we're in, they were not in our budget, we would not have brought them in, we would not have been discussing if it weren't for COVID. What you bring to us in the budget to understand going forward is something different, and you will have to justify, just like you would in any other budget year. Why we need this FTE. But at the moment, everything going forward to the Board of Finance is to maintain the level of education that we believe is appropriate. And due to COVID, we need to add this, and that's not why, why it's not in our current budget.
Yep, that's correct. A corollary question, corollary question is really like, would they, would they, would we reduce these if we go back to a normal sort of situation? Some we, we could, and others we may not, and then others dependent on governor's executive orders and so on and so forth, that we may be. We may even have a choice.
Yeah, but that's for a board discussion, not for our discussion with the Board of Finance. Ms. Ritchie?
Right, so I mean, right now we're talking about what are COVID specific new expenses that we're going to be bringing eventually to the Board of Finance for approval? And we don't know what the world's going to look like in a year, which we have crystal ball, we just don't, and we need CDC and state guidance to guide us at some point down the road. So right now, these are temporary COVID positions, but we don't know what the world is going to look like down the road. So I just want to walk through where we are, because these numbers are very fluid and they seem to be changing every day. And they'll probably change before next Tuesday night, because they seem to change every day. But where I have us right now, and I'll just, we're at two point nine million less the grants, that's two point four. Plus, we have some additional expenses and savings that are coming in. Um, it sounds like the Finance Committee is going to speak next week about some potential transfers that could offset some of these expenses, those are 260,000. And then we also, um. I, is there, oh, there's some more cost, potential cost savings that we don't really know are going to come to fruition, that's about 96,000, so where I find us. Right about now in terms of total COVID-related expenses is at 2,063,472 dollars, does that make sense, Rich?
Yep, you're right around the ballpark, and I would, I would imagine as the year progresses. Um, we'll probably identify smaller pockets of available funds that will recommend transfer. Into these COVID buckets, like a good example might be furniture, it was furniture line in $45,000. You're not really buying much furniture, because we have less in the classroom. Um, and it's a little early to kind of make a recommendation like that, but I would think smaller items like that will probably materialize throughout the year as well.
So, and this is part of the reason in talking with Chairman Zagratsky and with, um, the moderator of the RTM, Seth Morton, we wanted to do these updates. But not yet go back and ask for an appropriation so that we can capture any savings, any efficiencies, that by the time we ask for an appropriation. We're really asking for the money we, we, we know we need with the best possible information we have at the town, so at the time. So I think these updates will continue, we, we needed to get a little. A little, uh, pavement under our feet in order to do it, but I, I think we'll look forward to pretty regular updates. Um, so the public watching, Board of Finance members watching, these numbers will fluctuate, but we'll try to keep everyone up to date with the most up-to-date numbers we have at the time.
Mrs. Ritchie, just following up, just for clarification, so the additional 12 FTEs, those are full year expenses that we do not anticipate dropping off during this current fiscal year.
Correct, we're seconding it for the full year, and, uh, we also assume, uh, benefit pathing of employee plus long if applicable. So if they're approved and we hire somebody, either way benefits, or they take single benefits, we'll see that fluctuate over time.
Okay, thanks. Mrs. McCammon.
In terms of timing, how have you set it up, um, so that we can actually hire these folks, because you would need us to approve it, so, so what are you thinking about so that we can, um, figure out? What, what is your order of events that you've set out and, and can the board?
So we don't, I like to answer, we don't need to approve, what we need to approve is the transfers they bring to us.
We don't need to approve incremental hiring?
Um, no, if they do it within their budget, we don't, so that's part of making sure the Board of Finance understands what the appropriation is, so it's not the hiring we approve. It will be the transfer that we approve, we've delegated hiring for policy to the superintendent. So it's a good question, but the, the semantics of it is, and that's why you don't see it for action tonight. Is they don't have a transfer to bring forward for us yet, so we don't have an action yet. But what we would need to be deciding, and that's why the question is good, is that we understand this. So that when a transfer comes, all of a sudden, we don't say no, and we've already hired the person. Does that make sense?
Yeah, and we don't have the dollars to hire, can we go into contracts with, with, uh, I mean, these are contractual.
We currently will. And that's, again, this rolling, we have the money within our appropriation to hire at this moment, so when the transfers come forward. We will need to approve.
I just add on to that, so right now, we have our dollar appropriation that we received from the town and the Board of Finance. At this point in time, that is what we can legally spend. If hypothetically, the Board of Finance says no to our request. Then we will be obligated to use the money that we have been appropriated, so. We would have to find other cost savings to make sure that we can keep what I think are very critically important staff in place, so. We would have to make some tough decisions once again, if the Board of Finance decides not to support the money that we need for COVID.
Yeah, which was, which is not the message I've heard other. From the majority of Board of Finance members, what I've heard from them is support the school system, unquote, understanding, but I imagine a lively discussion. Um, but Jill, I don't want your question to get lost, because it's an important question for Alan to answer, but the, what we have to do tonight is not approve hires. But as a group, we need, if we have concerns about hiring, we would voice it now to the superintendent.
So we are, we're, we're right now, uh. Advertising, have people ready to, uh, some cases, people ready to go, in some cases, we've got people in in a temporary basis as a sub at the moment. Uh, so we're, we're, we're really ready. We're really ready to move forward with this, and I, I mean, and honestly, I'm looking for the board to tacitly understand. Uh, what I'm doing, right, and what we have to do, uh, in order to make this work. Um, and if there's real concern, I would like to hear, you know, I would certainly like to hear that, um. But in absence of this, uh, that this is what I have to execute on.
You need us to transfer the money before you can hire?
No.
No, because they have money within the hiring and staffing line to do it. At the moment, yes, within that pool, and they can make transfers within that pool. Okay, but what we would need to know is we can't operate on deficit. So that, that's where, you know, again, this year is kind of wonky, it's putting us in a funny position, if there are concerns about this hiring, now is the time. To voice them, ask questions, because the superintendent, you may be ready, but to my knowledge, you haven't actually hired, because we needed to do this first. So are there any concerns about the FTE?
Sorry for my contact, not you.
Tara.
Yes, Mr. Seany.
Tara, John, um, I guess, I guess from a, we find ourselves in an uncommon year and an uncommon position with facing a future deficit, so. I guess my question is to the board on a process issue. You know, when we as a board weigh in, and I think it's appropriate to weigh in and, and vote on the final appropriation, which is requested. From the Board of Finance to fit that gap, so I guess my question is, is that proper, proper process? Given that the Board of Education will be the actual body that makes the request to finance RTM? And two, kind of how do we see the timing of that appropriation request? When, when do we see that as a proper moment? Because I certainly don't want to be waiting until May or June to make that appropriation request. Um, but I also don't want to jump the gun and do it October 20th, so. I think it from a board discussion point, I'd love to hear kind of the opinion from all members.
So John, you're a little choppy, so again, I'm going to try to translate, just tell me if I get it right. What you're saying is, will the board vote on the final appropriation that we will move forward with? Yes. Um, do we as a group, you know, because we're voting on that, we would all need to agree with what we go? Would I happen to agree with what I think you're saying, October 20th seems early, because I don't know that we have maybe exhausted all the efficiencies or savings that we might find? But my timeline, and, and I'd love to talk a little bit about this. Would be that we really should be pretty firm in what we think we need by December, such that we're going before. It's, it's difficult, it's going to dovetail right with budget season, so we're going to have to keep emotions and people kind of in the right COVID lanes versus a new budget lane. I would think we really need to be clear. Feel free, anyone to correct me if I'm wrong, by January, at least on a first tranche of what we're looking for, and understanding, are we going for a whole appropriation or tranches? Um, and I think that's probably best served by talking with the Board of Finance and how they want to approach it. But I do think, and this is the finer point. Once again, we'll be going them for an appropriation of COVID expenses, so this board needs to be behind that appropriation. As a group, by a vote, yes, I would agree with you, Mr. Seany. Does anyone have any thoughts on that? Mrs. Ritchie.
Yeah, I, I do agree with that, I do, and I, I would look to the Board of Finance and the RTM for their input in terms of how they want to see. Us come to them, do they want it in one bucket, do they want to see it in tranches? Um, I think as we move along in the year, we'll be able to better understand what additional expenses there may be, what cost savings. Um, maybe we won't be utilizing all these things that are in the estimates right now, so I think. We have to have that dialogue with the Board of Finance on Tuesday night and see where they're coming out. Um, I think by January, we should have a pretty good idea. Of what that total number is going to be and whether we're going to request it in one appropriation or in, um, several stages, that's, I think. Something we need to discuss as a board and discuss with the Board of Finance and.
With a reminder that we've always been good stewards and any unexpended funds, if, and I kind of liked the. Dream that Mr. Seany gave us for a minute, that the pandemic might be over in spring, that was lovely to even think about, if something changed, certainly. You know, we've always been good stewards of returning that money to the town and the general fund. Mr. Burke.
So, so if I could.
Go ahead.
That was me, sorry, thank you, Michael, um, you know, so I think it's important that on, uh, October 20th, when the administration and our chair go to the. Board of Finance, that they make it clear that this is the administration's first, I don't want to say first cut. A thoughtful cut at where we're kind of falling out today, but by no means the final appropriation that's been approved by the Board of Education. So make it clear that this is basically the administration's message that sharing with our, not only the Board of Education, but the wider community. Um, but this is, uh, a, a figure that's got to be, um, basically approved by the, the Board of Education ultimately.
Uh, Mr. Burke.
Right, I, I agree with, uh, with John, it would, you folks have said that, uh. It's really a conversation to have with the Board of Finance, that we're going to have an idea of these, these numbers. And, uh, just what makes the most sense in terms of why we ask for that appropriation, uh, I think that's a conversation that. Is good to have, uh, with them, I would say with regard to the FTEs, uh. I'm, I'm always reticent about adding FTEs that aren't. Teaching our children, but I'm. Calming myself with the notion that these FTEs are protecting our children. So, but I think that, uh, from, from my point of view, a, as we go down this road. I'm certainly very reticent about adding FTEs, that's why I'm asking about the three up at the high school, like those are older kids, what are they really doing? That has to be monitored, but I, I accept the, the premise, but we don't, or I, I don't. Do it lightly.
I think your analysis or your strategy or your, your timeline, um. Is, is reasonable, certainly as you turn into the new year, you certainly get a good idea, if not before then, um. I think also, uh, I've gone through this many times. Um, the more we communicate with the Boards of Finance and the RTMs to keep them apprised, uh, the better, and we generally speaking would take our lead as to. When they would want that appropriation to be formalized as a request. Generally speaking, that's what I'd find.
Thoughts, just be aware that while we will finally vote, some of these we are expending, so I think that's the, the, the importance of these updates. To understand the dollars that we are expending, and as Ms. Ritchie says, um, the idea that should for some reason. Anyone all of a sudden have a change of heart, we will be pulling from somewhere else to fund these, once, once they go through. Mrs. McCammon.
So I think if we could just quickly walk through the, particularly under staffing, because I think a lot of the other ones are, are self-explanatory. So a lot of the staffing on there is for safety purposes because of the. You've made to keep social distancing, or because we're using our, the open ends of the high school campuses, et cetera. From the technology perspective, it has to do with the fact that we have a much larger, uh, rollout of technology than what we've had before, you had some very compelling numbers. Can you quickly just touch on those? Um, the number of devices that we have now versus what we had before, um, I think it's important for. Us to understand.
Uh, so, so we have 2,100 elementary, uh, devices, uh, that, uh, currently in place, um, we. We weren't really one-to-one K-to-one, and right now, we've, we've gone one-to-one K-to-one, um, and. Those are the main devices, but the, the, uh, the main sort of like. Shift in terms of devices, but the actual assistance onsite that you've heard, right, over, you know, repeatedly, uh, at times here at the board. Um, of assistance to staff and troubleshooting, uh, Dennis, Francis, I brought up this evening, Mr. Rowan, the. Uh, how quickly can we get that? Well, if someone's onsite, we can get it automatically, right, um, to the family and to the, to the staff member who's working there. Um, I mean, that, that's, that's your main, I mean, that's your main device number, Jill, the, 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 those devices.
Okay. And to, just to Mr. Burke's point, and then Mrs. McCammon, please continue, um. Mike, my understanding, and the administration can feel free to correct me, is the campus monitors up at the high school are not only, um. Helping older kids. But as we've talked about, security and security concerns of high schools, we now have a lot more children outside during the school day. And making sure that there aren't adult eyes, should there be external concerns? Um, is also a consideration in this.
That's an excellent point.
Mrs. McCammon.
No, I was just going to say that when we go to the Board of Finance, some of this backup data is, is valuable, I think, so hopefully. Some of the stuff that you've given us on technology or on that, that context regarding, um, the, the monitors in particular, I, to have that as well, I think would be great.
Mr. Janine.
So to that point, as you said, come colder weather or inclement weather, the tent thing does not necessarily work, so we have more kids inside. So you still see the need for the same amount of people in terms of monitoring, social distancing and all that type of stuff inside, or could this change? Come cold or weather when we're not having as many people outside?
It could probably change to some degree perhaps, but, but the, the kids are still going to have to go somewhere to be supervised. Um, I would say, by the way, we, we included, um, the analysis of, of, uh, several districts or surrounding districts that we'd normally compare ourselves to. In terms of how we stack up per device, uh, for, uh, support, and, um, even with the two new people, we're, we're still at the high end. For technology, that's right.
And I would just say that the open ends are going to be all year round, so I think the campus monitor is part of what they would be doing at the high school.
Yes, it will be.
Is working to monitor that and keep those kids safe as they're coming on and off campus more frequently than we're used to.
And I'd like to thank the kids actually for executing some, some safety and maybe being responsible, uh, they've done a good job thus far.
Mr. Maroney.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm clear on the campus monitors at the high school, campus monitor, middle school, I'm a little unsure of six lunch monitors, so where, where would those be distributed?
Uh, so, uh, that's across also elementary schools.
We have five, right?
Uh, yeah. 10 monitors at the elementary schools and three at the middle school. Cause we went into the two gymnasiums at the, at the middle school.
And that's just because, I'm sorry to jump in, but that's because lunch is very spread out now, kids are basically all over the building, and. That's because they have to be.
Six feet.
Six feet apart, so we're now looking at utilizing a lot more space rather than what we typically use as the lunch room, now we have kids. Children, students throughout the building.
So Dr.'s la, Dr. Adley's last slide is questions and discussion, but I feel that we may have accomplished that.
I just wanted to.
Mr. Maroney.
So, so, uh, Deb brings up a good point, so we're very comfortable with our six feet, three feet and all our social distancing in classrooms and at lunch?
We do now have six feet in classrooms, uh, for eating in classroom. Uh, snack, snack aside, uh, for lunches, we're, we're eating six feet apart. In classrooms and six feet apart than the others.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, I'm going to move on to our next agenda item.
Can I just clarify something, I just want to make sure that, and there's a couple of places in the high school cafeteria where they have plexiglass in between the seats, just for.
Um, we will move on to a follow-up report on Darian High School Class of 2020 AP and SAT, and, um, Mrs. Emanuelson, our Director of Guidance, is here somewhere on Zoom. I see her in a small square, I think, um, thank you. Mrs. Emanuelson.
Thank you. Um, I'm going to go ahead and try and share my screen and utilize all that technology we've been talking about, so bear with me, please. Okay, can everybody see that? Did I do that correctly?
Yes, we're good.
Yes.
All right, wonderful, okay, so I'm so pleased to be with you tonight for what we're calling Part Two of our Class of 2020 Report. As you may remember, while this report is typically shared in June, the circumstances of the pandemic delayed the reporting of much of the data. In addition to the completion of the 2020 report, I will also be sharing the testing data from 2019-20 that is typically presented at this time of year. The Darian High School Counseling Department would like to express our deep gratitude for the ongoing support we receive from our Building Administration, Central Services and this board. As you know, I am always proud of the work we do, but I have been personally and professionally inspired by the innovative and caring ways that the DHS counselors have risen to the challenge of supporting students and families. In these most challenging times. So back to the Class of 2020, there were 361 students, 97% applied to at least one college. 61% of the DHS seniors were accepted to at least half of the schools they applied to. 18% were accepted at all their schools. We had nine National Merit finalists, 28 National Merit commended scholars, four presidential scholarship candidates, and one Governor Scholar. Two of our students are attending military academies. We reviewed these first few slides in June, so I won't spend too much time on them, but we have some updated information, so I think they're worth sharing again for context. A small note, as I mentioned in June, collecting the data was much trickier this year since we had to do it virtually. We have collected outcome data for each student, but there are still. We have collected outcome data for each student, but there are still holes in some of the application data. So this is our summary info. More than 96% of the class of 2020 are pursuing higher education this fall. The other category, which includes about 10 students, includes gap years, students who are undecided, students continuing beyond a fourth year of high school or participating in other educational programs, and several students pursuing personal and athletic interests. Looking at our application analysis, our office processed 3,506 transcript requests last year. This number represents the number of requests that we sent materials for. This is up from 2019 by about 250 applications. So this represents overall application numbers and does not reflect withdrawn or incomplete applications. Once we figure in the withdrawals and incompletes, we have a net total of 2,849 applications or an average of 7.9 completed applications per student. The average number of applications per student has remained fairly consistent over the past four years. In 2019, it was 6.9. Our students applied to 397 different schools and enrolled at 143 different institutions, which is also very consistent with previous years. Once again, we did very well in our early decision pools. 48% of the class applied through an early decision plan. This is a slight increase over past years. 61% were admitted under an ED plan, and this does reflect some students who applied and were accepted under an ED2 plan. You will notice that the total number of early decision applications at 199 is higher than the number of students applying at 175. This difference does reflect the number of, um, early decision two applications. As you may know, early decision two is a binding early, uh, early decision plan that is later in the school year, usually in January, designed to capture students who did not already commit to an ED in the fall. In some cases, a student may have been deferred or denied by their ED1 school, releasing them from the binding nature of ED1 and submitted an ED2 application. Overall, the ED data has remained strong and consistent over the past four years. This is our most applications. Um, no big huge surprises or changes here. Uh, we did see and note, um, we always look at the data to see if there's anything interesting. We did see quite a jump in the Elon application. So Elon is on the list this year where it has not been in the past. Um, I was curious about that. So I actually spoke with each of the school counselors and there was not an identified reason. There's lots of reasons that we see jumps like that, um, but there was not one particular thing that stood out to the counselors um, as why that particular school had so many more applications this year, but it was wonderful to see. This is our most attended. Again, no huge surprises here either, although UConn is back on top this year. Final decisions may have been influenced by our world circumstances, although it is hard to say for certain. BC also jumped quite a bit, um, but one of the, again, we always look at what those jumps are. This was the first year that BC offered a binding early decision plan. And so we always have many students admitted to BC, but now under a binding early decision, they were bound to go. So for example, last year we had three students in the class of 2019 attend BC, and this year we're up 14. And we do attribute that to, uh, the new early decision plan. Chart number four in your packet is related to geography. There were no big changes that we noticed in the geographic distribution of where our students were attending. We still have more than a third of our students who stay in New England. Chart number seven in your packet lists the school by percentage of acceptances, both, both the highest percentage of acceptance and the lowest percentage of acceptance. Um, please note that this chart represents four years of longitudinal data. Each year we look at the schools with the more selective rates of acceptance. Our acceptance rates were higher than the national average in most cases, including most of the IVs. It's also important to consider, even when comparing to national acceptance rates, that the sample size is fairly small in many cases. Each year we look at these numbers to see if anything is surprising and we reach out to schools where our numbers are not quite where we would like to have them be to open those conversations so that we can further understand their admissions profile and better advise families. We continue to work to develop relationships with all schools, including the schools with lower acceptance rates. Prior to the pandemic, when we had in-person representative visits, a school counselor would meet with every representative who visited, and that's over 150 in the fall alone, to connect, to share more about our great, the great work our students are doing and what a wonderful school we have, and to learn more about each, each institution. We've been told by many colleges that this is highly, a highly unusual practice and is another example of the personal ways that our counselors assist our students. This year, we are very pleased to be able to continue to connect our students with colleges virtually this fall. Um, we have sometimes a dozen or dozen and a half visits virtually happening every day. Even in the virtual world, we are living, school counselors present for each of the virtual college visits and is still meeting one-on-one with each representative after the student meeting to continue to strengthen all of our relationships. This is our state school data. The number of applications submitted to state schools remain fairly constant this year. However, we did not see a notable increase in enrollment at state schools. Again, UConn was up by just a few enrollments. Once again, NCC had seven students enroll this year, which is such a great local option. So we're really excited about that. Percentage of apps appears to be down, but please remember that the overall number of application numbers were up. So the total number of applications is still very much aligned. Chart number nine in your packet shows our Ivy analysis. We are always proud of how our kids do in the very competitive Ivy process. This year we saw an increase of almost 40 applications to IVs. We saw an increase in acceptance percentage at both Harvard and Brown. I would like to note that this is one of the places we are, where we are seeing, um, fairly large gaps in the individual application data. At the time of survey and at the time of follow-up, there were still a number of deferments and waitlists. And despite our best and multiple efforts to chase down every application outcome, it was much harder to do without kids in the building. We're currently missing data for approximately 25% of our IV applications. I would anticipate that the data would look very similar to past years if we had collected all the data. The number of students attending an Ivy League has remained fairly constant over time. And once again, we look at these numbers each year and do outreach to schools to further understand what they're looking for and how we can best advise our students. These are our class averages. As you can see, GPA and test score averages are consistent with past years. Since I will be presenting the testing data shortly, I did want to point out that this slide reflects, reflects averages. So it accounts for all tests taken. The testing data I will share shortly is reported by College Board in a slightly different way, and I'll explain more when we look at that data. Uh, one note on chart number 11 in your packet, which summarizes results by school, just to help with the interpretation. The net apply reflects the total transcript requests less the incompletes and the withdrawn applications. If you go from the other direction, from right to left, when you add the acceptances, deny and waitlist, it may not add up to the net apply because it does not include applications listed as deferment or unknown results. We wanted to be mindful of the information that we thought would be most valued by the public. So given the world circumstances, we thought it was important to circle back to the class of 2020 to try and ascertain the extent to which their plans have been impacted. We surveyed the class and received 87 responses for a 24% response rate. We do feel that this can be considered a decent sample size to reflect the larger class. Approximately 13% of student plans have changed since they were last surveyed in June. When we probe these changes a little more, most of the students said that their schools went all remote so that they are attending the school but stayed at home to learn virtually, which was a change of plan. A small handful of others decided to take a gap year as a result of their school going virtual or programs or sports that they had planned to be involved with being canceled. The gap years include travel, both structured and informal, as well as specialized athletic pursuits. When asked if they were involved in any special programs at school, students cited athletic programs, music programs and honors programs. 58.6% of respondents are still attending their school and are actually on campus, which is wonderful. 30% are attending the school that they had, um, chosen, but they are learning virtually. 13% have changed their plans since we surveyed them. And again, this includes full-time work or taking a gap year to see what's going to happen next with their school. This is a graphic showing whether or not their plans change. And as you can see, the vast majority of the respondents said that they had not. You can see here that the majority are attending school on campus. This graph shows some of the changes that were reported. And again, it's a fairly small number of students who said that, um, there were any changes to their plans. And these are some of the intended majors of our 2020 grads. As you can see, they are varied and exciting choices. Our office continues to be available to assist our grads with their changing plans as needed. We definitely took the opportunity through the survey to remind them of that. Switching gears to 2019.
You know what? Mrs. Emanuelson, can I just pause here and have them, have anyone ask questions on the college report? And then we'll go to, is that okay? Does anyone have questions or comments on, um, the college reporting information? Mr. Burke?
Uh, just a comment. Thank you for the report. It's incredibly detailed. I know it's extremely useful to parents and I just want to, uh, applaud the work you do. I think we may take it for granted in this town, but it's, uh, a surpassing amount of, uh, children who go on to excellent, uh, schools. That's the whole capstone of being here in this town. You guys have done a wonderful job and continue to do a wonderful job, uh, doing that. So, uh, thank you for your hard work.
Thank you, Mr. Burke.
Uh, Mrs. McCammon?
Um, yeah, thank you for the report, certainly. Um, I, I loved your comment when you were talking about the IVs and what do we track over time? I have asked this question before, I'll ask again. Um, and I think, you know, some of the strategic planning work and or the portrait of a graduate and how we define success may help us enter, answer this in the future. But I would love for us to track some other cohorts of students. How do we do with our applications to Juilliard over time? For example, and other schools of that, of that nature. Um, how do we do with certain types of engineering schools over time? And Shirley, I'll look at you again. How do we do with our kids with disabilities that might choose to go into, uh, a college environment? And then for those kids who are not planning to go to college, what is happening? I think it's very critical that certainly we have to, to, um, you know, protect the privacy of children, but we also need to be sure that we are public and accountable and honor the fact that people choose, uh, other things. So I would like to know when we will hear about our kids who go through transition. Are we going to hear in December? Do we have to wait till next year? I'd like to hear about those kids.
I'm sorry, Mrs. McCammon, is that directed at me or to Shirley?
Well, either of you, honestly.
So, so I can speak to, and I, and it's a little bit harder to track. And I did, I did ask it on the survey, um, cause I know that you and I have had this conversation a few times about special programs. And I was hoping to get some real specifics from our kids and they, it really was more general, like I'm in the orchestra or I'm in the pep band or, um, I'm, you know, so it wasn't necessarily the, the specialized school response that I think that you're looking for. Um, I can tell you that it is a priority of both the school counseling department and the administration that every student that is graduating has a, um, healthy and productive post-high school plan that they can be excited about. College is not that for every kid. And we are excited and committed to making sure that every student has a plan that moves them forward towards their goals and to really understanding what those goals are. The department is having some really exciting and interesting conversations about the kind of programming, um, that we can offer around gap years, alternative educational programs, besides just a two or a four-year school. Uh, we're starting to connect with some of those programs, especially what we're finding, some of the silver linings of this environment is, um, being able to bring programs from all over the country in virtually to do something like that. So that's one of the things that we're looking at down the line. Um, my dream would be in the spring, but it might be pushed to next fall. But we're looking at all the different ways in which we can program, um, for all kids. And then, but you know, in addition to what we're already doing, but really starting to be very proactive with putting those options in front of our families.
Thank you. Shirley?
I'll just, I'll just, um, Megan, just to add to, is this on?
Yes.
And each year I say the same thing, Joe, which is it's such a small, um, number of students and we always look at how we protect privacy of the transition plans. And for those transition programs, they're very often local or within that. So we haven't yet found a way. And I may, you know, I may be speaking about six children, of how to, how to do that. I think we can possibly in our work with Megan, go back and find, um, a more abstract way of showing up different programs. Maybe we can do that and still protect the privacy of our students. And just to keep in mind also, the majority of our students are attending general education classes and they have supplemental instruction supports. And many students may choose not even to identify that they have an IEP when they apply to colleges.
Yes.
So to try to find a balance of what we can reveal with still having that privacy. But I certainly will sit down with Megan and see what we've come up with that may have more anonymity to it. But talk about different options for students.
So the, the piece I might add in too, and Mrs. Emanuelson, correct me if I'm wrong. This is a lot of self-reporting. And so we can ask the question, but if families choose not to report in, I think we have to respect that decision. It looks like we have 10 students, um, for other undecideds. So I hear the question, but I, I thank you, Mrs. Emanuelson, for, for really running a robust kind of reporting period where really, you know, there are 10 people who, who chose to stay in that other undecided for, for their own reasons. Mrs. Ritchie?
Wait, I think we need a clarification because for, for certain children with IEPs, there is actually a mandated transition process where the, the, the district actually helps them transition into a different kind of environment post-graduation. So I think that, um, that's a bit different from self-reporting. Uh, and so again, I, I sympathize that we don't want to, uh, to expose or, or violate anyone's privacy, but I do think as part of accountability, we want to make sure that we are preparing all of our kids for the next environment. And there needs to be a way that we can talk about it so that, so that we are assured that we are, um, are preparing everyone.
So that might be where you, as you noted, that portrait of the graduate, um, and strategic plan helps because I think our, we have to look at what does this information do to help inform us as a board in our work every time we ask for it? So what would that information help us do? And so if there are helps that would help these students, um, where we know where their goals are. So just like we shepherd along all our students to reach their goals, we could adjust programs or that would be fun. I just, um, I, and I know you've brought this up before and I know the privacy concern has been there before. So maybe at some point as we, as a board, look at strategic plan, approach to the graduate, we can start to understand what is a board, our role is by that 12th grade and how do we make sure we've achieved it? And even for the students where we have responsibilities past 12th grade, how do we make sure we're reaching their needs? But, but I do thank the Guidance Department for all the children they have, um, tracked and provided here. Mrs. Ritchie?
Thank you. So thank you, Megan. This is one of my favorite presentations of the year. I love seeing this data. I, I thank you and the whole Guidance Department for all the work you do for our, especially for our seniors and juniors as they're planning for their next phases in their lives. Um, I'm happy to see ED is still at the high percentage level because it's something that I'm glad our students are taking advantage of. And, um, I'm glad, I thank you for doing a follow-up survey with students specifically this year to see what they're doing because it is interesting. And I know firsthand that there are a lot of students that are taking gap years or exploring other opportunities during that time. And it is great to provide on a regular basis what potentially a gap year would look like for any time, not just during COVID, because I think that is an exciting opportunity for any student. And I think it's the first time that we've gotten recruited athlete information. Is that correct?
I believe it was in there last year, but it might be. It might be. I know it's always a question and so, um,
Always my question. So I, thank you. I'm, I'm, I'm saying thanks.
I'm trying to listen. I'm trying to make you all happy. Um, so yeah, so as you can see, um, I believe I'd have to pull up the exact number, but I believe it was 12.7% of the class self-identified as recruited athletes across 17 sports and 33 institutions.
I, I thank you for that. It's just, it's very interesting data for me to see. Um, and I'm glad that we're including it. I, I thank you for this wonderful report. I love seeing it every year.
Thank you for your nice comments.
Mr. Maroney?
I just want to echo that I, um, that that is fantastic. And it's, and I'm with Mrs. Ritchie. This is always one of my most pleasant days of, of being a board member. Um, but I'm going to ask a question I've asked before, or just to make a comment. And I think that, that our chair brings up the point of the vision of the graduate and that the, the alumni were very engaged and very insightful as to what their education at Darian High has, has allowed them to do in, in college or post-college. And I, and I, I think it would be for me at least, very interesting to see how much or how well Darian High has prepared them for their school and how, how they felt at their school, did the, the Darian High School and the Darian School system prepare them for that? As well as how happy were they in their choice of college and did they transfer out and why and so forth? That I think could help future students who are attending those schools understand better or not, why or why not to attend that school, or at least a point.
And, and I think you and I, um, I think we shared an exciting moment a year ago or a year and change ago when I did that because that was our intention. We have, um, one of our school counselors, Caitlin Stanton, has taken that on as a project. We would like to survey our students. Um, we've gone to collecting personal email addresses. We've learned. Uh, we need to get their, get their Gmails early. Um, like to survey them towards the end of their freshman year of college to ask precisely the questions that, that you've asked. And then we also want to survey them shortly before the end of their fourth year to start, start to track, um, future planning. So we have access to some of that data from the clearinghouse, but we really would like to hear directly from our students. So the, the spring, that what happened in the spring really changed the, our ability to send that survey. But that is absolutely, that's the surveys already created, the database of contacts for the, I think we have the class of 2018 and 19 in there. That is absolutely our intention to gather that data. So. So hopefully this June, I'll be able to share some of that with you.
Thank you very much. Much appreciated. I think it'll be very exciting. Thank you.
Agreed.
Great. So, um, thank you. We'll move on. But thank you, Mrs. Emanuelson. I, I will say my most exciting slide on this is the intended majors. I definitely think it shows that we are teaching kids to go out there and, and chase down some dreams and try some things out and be brave. It's so varied. And I think that credit really rests with the teachers and the administrators for building confidence in our kids. So that's my favorite slide since we're all, we're all talking about our favorite slides. But thank you so much and thank you for all the hard work that, and I, and I don't mean this diminutively, but your little group does. It does a lot of work on behalf of children. So thank you for leading them and, and thank you for coming back to us with this.
Thank you. I really appreciate that, Tara.
Okay, going back to tests.
Woo-hoo, testing. We're testing, we're testing 440 students in the morning. We've got, we've got PSAT and SAT going tomorrow, so it's a good time to talk about testing. So understandably, this data is somewhat limited in the ways that you see listed. We have not yet received cohort data for ACT. And due to the school closure in the spring, we were not able to administer the SAT School Day or the NGSS to the class of 2021. So we have no data on those two assessments. As a result of all the spring and summer test cancellations, our department truly wanted to do all we could to support the class of 2021. So we decided to add, in addition to what we had already scheduled as, as test sites, we added a September ACT, which we went to great lengths to make arrangements to have that be only for DHS students to be an unlisted site. We added a September SAT date. And then we are also offering the SAT School Day, which is exclusive to our seniors, which is happening tomorrow. So we were really pleased to be able to add those dates and to offer both, both an exclusive ACT and SAT option to our students. More than half of the senior class will be taking advantage of the opportunity to take the SAT School Day tomorrow. And again, we were just really pleased that we were able to offer those opportunities for students. For the SAT, the class of 2020 SAT mean score was a 1257, a 624 in the evidence-based reading and rating, and 633 in math. 95% of the class took the SAT at some point. This number, the way that College Board reports this number out as cohort data, this number reflects the last time that a student took the SAT. So in other words, if a student took the test multiple times, they use the last administration when calculating our cohort. And this is the number that's used to compare us on a state and a national level. So when we talked about averages earlier on, that's why that number is a little bit different. This reflects the last time. Now, for some students, if they were focused on the ACT, the last time they took an SAT might have been the one and only time that they took it on SAT School Day. But that is just to make that distinction that that's how College Board reports that out. Again, these scores are very much in line with past years. And you can see that here, this is a comparison from the last four years. And you can see our scores are strong and stable over time. This is how the 2020 scores compare to our DIRG, the state and national. And Darien is included in those, those DIRG numbers that are listed. So as you can see, we are doing very, very well. And again, we do not have cohort data for the ACT. So our state mandated testing for our juniors will be held in the spring. The SAT School Day will be held on March 24th and the NGSS Science Test will be held on May 26th. Moving on to AP. AP exams are given in May each year and are designed to assess mastery of content in a subject-specific college-level curriculum. The scores are reported on a one to five scale with a three being considered qualified to receive college credit or placement based on that score. As you likely know, the AP exams were moved to a digital platform this past spring with an adjusted format as a result of the pandemic and worldwide school closures. Once again, our amazing students and teachers rose to the challenge, receiving extremely high scores on the AP exams. We had 465 students complete 971 exams. 89% of the exams received at least a score of a three, which is consistent with past, past years. 70% of exams received a score or of a four or a five, which is just incredibly impressive. And registration for the 2021 exams is already underway. This chart shows the five-year AP score trend, again, very strong and consistent over time. This is the list of the 23 AP courses that we offered at DHS last year. We also had students self-study for four additional exams and courses we do not currently offer. AP Chinese, AP Psychology, and AP Algebra Based Physics 1 and 2. Students do not need to be enrolled in an AP course to take an exam. This past year, we offered AP Macroeconomics and AP Computer Science Principles for the first time. And this year, we're excited to offer Photography Track in the AP 2D Art and Design Program.
Great.
Thank, thank.
Sorry, go ahead.
Thank you for the opportunity to share all the wonderful hard work and accomplishments of our students. And I am happy to take any additional board questions.
Okay, board question. Seeing none, thank you. I know also the thank yous sometimes may seem like a lot, but I know the AP tests online, you guys managed many calls from kids trying to figure that out. John, is that a hand raised? I don't want to miss you. Okay. And, and certainly the hard work of our students and our guidance department who helped so much and so often with tests being canceled and, and kids not knowing what to do. The fact that you could appear some extra tests for our kids, I know, was a level of comfort to many. So again, small but mighty, and we thank you guys for all you do.
They're absolutely phenomenal, the guidance department, and exceptional leadership to just phenomenal service to kids. Thank you, Megan. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you all. Much appreciated.
Thanks, Megan. We will move on to discussion and possible action on Board of Education Policy C19, C1901. Sorry, I don't want to miss them all. 4000 dash C19, 1075 C19, and 9310 C19. I will turn it over to Mr. Burke and Mrs. Stein.
Okay, thank you. As I mentioned earlier, the committee met on September 18th and we reviewed these policies. They are COVID-related. That's what the C designation is in front of them. Some are completely new policies, some are revisions. I can take them singularly as we go and we can discuss them. The first policy, C-19, it's in your packet, is in essence, a policy that gives us the authority to create COVID-related policies. So it is a, a broad policy in that sense. The important thing to note in it is that all the policies that we create under the C's section are, will expire at the end of the school year, June 30th, which means if we feel we're in a situation where we need to extend them, we will have to actually do that. Are there any questions about the initial C19 policy?
Seeing none, you can move on, Mr. Burke.
Moving on to C19 dash 01. This is a policy related to masks. I will point out to the members and to the policy committee members that since we met, there was one alteration to this policy. It is to extend it to pre-kindergarten. The one that we saw when we met on the 18th was K through 12. And the packet and the policy includes the forms that parents fill out related to if they believe that there is a waiver that is necessary. Are there any questions about C19 dash 01? All right, hearing none, we'll move on to 4000 dash C19. This is again, a new policy that was created to make us compliant with the Family First Coronavirus Response Act leave. It is related to teachers taking leave and calculating same. This policy, though, while the others are effective only through or until June, this is through December 31st, 2020, or until further notice from the board. But it is pretty standard and compliant with other state and federal statutes. Are there any questions concerning that policy?
Mrs. Ritchie. Just Mike on that particular policy. If for some reason that, that family act gets extended, would we need to extend the policy? Or does a policy automatically extend at the year end?
I believe we would need to extend it ourselves. But, and it's important to know that each of these policies that we're talking about now, we've been working in this environment. So it is sort of, we're catching up with what the practice has always, has already been. So if it gets extended, we'll be able to do that. We'll out immediately renewing the policy, but we should get to it, you know, forthwith after the expiration date.
Mrs. McCammon. So does this policy have any budgetary implications, Rich or Alan? And if so, is that already calculated into the budget?
Mr. Rue.
So everything, everything that's here would already be calculated for that forecast.
Thank you for asking.
Any other questions? You may move on, Mr. Burke.
Okay. Going on to policy 1075 dash C19. This relates to cleaning supplies. It makes us able to expand the types of cleaners used to any of those that might be approved under federal law. This is a revision to our previous policy, adding that language. Are there any questions concerning that? Okay, and then lastly, policy 9310 dash C19. This is related to meeting conduct. This codifies our ability to meet via Zoom. And again, I would note that this goes through to the end of the year. It may be that the board or future boards may want to just extend this ability to attend electronically as a matter of course. And the next board will have to consider that. But this basically codifies the practice that we've been engaging in since COVID was upon us.
And, and our ability to do it now is under the governor's executive order. So I think what this does, it makes it our own policy to be able to work with at least through the end of this year.
Correct.
End of this, this, the school year.
School year.
Um, okay, if there are no questions, I feel like we could take them as a batch, Mr. Burke. So, yeah. If we could approve all the Board of Education policies following under C19 policy, policies given the coronavirus, understanding the expiration dates and what board action might be necessary. May I have a motion to approve? Mr. Janine, so moves. Mrs. Stein, seconds. All in favor and all unanimous. Thank you, everybody.
Hey, Tara.
Yes.
Could I ask a quick follow-up question on policies? We got a memo July 20th from KIB and there were probably about three dozen policies that should be reviewed. I guess my question is, is there an intent for us to kind of look at other policies? Or how are we addressing kind of the COVID-related stuff?
Sure.
Policies in general that might be impacted.
Sure, Mrs. Stein and Mr. Burke can probably speak specifically to it, but we work directly with shipment and Goodwin for the ones that are most applicable and need to go. They go through the policy committee. But Mrs. Stein and Mr. Burke, if you'd like to speak directly to the process?
John, to answer a question specifically, yes, there are other policies that we're looking at specifically for our policy committee meeting October 23rd. We'll be looking at revisions related to 1200 use of school facilities, 1225 visitors, 1250 volunteers, student interns and other non-employees, 5130 student attendance and truancy, 5340 physical examinations and screenings, 5220 student discipline, and 5395 transportation. Typically, we will get updates from shipment and Goodwin that we will then bring to the board to make us compliant with other state and local or federal statutes. And there are also times when we will get direction from the board that they want a particular policy looked at.
Mrs. Stein, anything to add? Okay, so y'all are busy on October 23rd.
Tune in.
But yes, so we, we do, we get them, take them in batches as advised by council. Moving, so there's a motion on the table and it was a unanimous vote, but I will say, Mr. Sini, I, I didn't record your vote. So I was assuming it was an approved, but, okay, thank you. It is a true unanimous vote. Thank you. An update on the district's teacher and administrator evaluation plans, Mr. Stein and Mr. Tramburn.
Good evening again, and thank you, everyone. Later in the summer, the State Department of Education offered some flexibilities for teacher and administrator evaluation that we are glad to incorporate in our process for this year. So you may have, over time, become accustomed to hearing SLOs, Student Learning Objectives or Student Learning Outcomes, and IAGDs, Indicators of Academic Growth and Development. Those, that language is not part of the plan this year. So they are using language of teachers are developing a minimum of one student learning goal, not calling it an SLO anymore, with a minimum of two indicators or measures of accomplishment in lieu of growth and development. And the, the shift is the, that can focus on social and emotional learning, student engagement, parent engagement, or academics. Similarly, the administrator goals are shifting and they're focusing on two indicators of accomplishment. And those very relevantly can focus on the reopening of schools, supporting health and safety, supporting remote and distance teaching and learning, mastery-based learning, or ensuring the equity for our most vulnerable students. I'll turn it over to Mrs. Stein.
Okay. So as far as observations for our teachers or site visits for the administrators, the flexibilities this year are that for beginning teachers or teachers who are below standard or developing, there'll be a minimum of three informal observations. Informal observations in our teacher plan are either announced or unannounced, a minimum of 15 minutes, but do require a post-conference with both written and verbal feedback. This for third and fourth year teachers who are in good standing, either meets or exceeds, it's a minimum of two informal observations. Both require a review of practice. So the administrator, it's basically the same sort of structure. Three for our newer administrators, three site visits, and two for our more experienced administrators. The administrator evaluation plan is a little more relaxed in what those site visits look like because we're evaluating our top management. And so the superintendent, central office team, and the building principals work together to make those site visits meaningful. So this actually tracks, if you remember, a few years ago, we introduced the mini observation pilot because we felt that the feedback and the evaluations were more authentic when they were shorter and, you know, more frequent. So I don't know how frequent we'll be this year, but we do have the ability to do more than three or more than two. And the state makes it clear that if a teacher is struggling, that remediation plans, assistant plans are still an option. We can always switch to formal observation and more targeted feedback with evidence. I need to, summative ratings. So every year we report summative ratings to the state in aggregate, not by individual teacher. The summative ratings are suspended for this year, the reporting. And so the summative ratings and the ratings of any observation are also suspended. If a teacher is struggling, we'll make sure, and Chris and I will work with our administrators to make sure that the feedback is specific enough so that they understand the areas of concern even without the ratings.
Any questions?
Mrs. McCammon. Given the rapid deployment of a lot of technology that a lot of teachers are having to get used to in a, in a very sudden way, are we anticipating any sort of increase specific to needing to remediate technological skills that might be captured by this process? And that might be a bit different from what we would expect in terms of, I mean, remediation is not the right word, but, but in terms of intervention in a typical year?
I would say that even though we're not rating and using the rubrics, we're still using the language that exists within the rubric of our, of teacher evaluation. And we certainly wouldn't use anything that's new this way punitively, but, but for growth. So I'm not sure if I'm getting at your question that way, but we certainly wouldn't look for places that we know to be a vulnerability in a year that there's this high level of new learning, but use it as a, a way and a time to support teachers.
Okay, thank you.
Marge and Chris, can you just talk a little bit to the team who put this together? Teacher voice was in this as well, kind of the understanding of the state, the fact that we needed to get back with a new evaluation plan. Can you talk a little bit about that?
Sure. So this has the support of the president of the teacher. Sure. Um, so this has the support of, um, the president of the Teachers Association, uh, for sure. And I don't know if you want to add anything else to that, Marge?
No, I'm just getting an okay from Jocelyn that she agrees.
No, that's good. I just think that it's been so hard and evaluations are, uh, a, a necessary and stressful thing, but it's good to know that we are partnering on this way forward.
Yes, it's been a welcome flexibility in all the conversations that I've had.
Great. Any other questions? Okay, great. Uh, we'll move on to the preliminary discussion of the 2020, 21, 2022. But, oh, sorry, presentation preliminary discussion on the regular Board of Education meetings for the 2021 calendar year. Um, are there any questions regarding the calendar? We all have budget season coming up. So it looks like we are keeping in what we've now done these last two years, these three budget meetings in January. I think the board has found them incredibly helpful. Um, certainly time-consuming, but helpful given the depth and breadth of our budget. I'm just double checking them on the calendar, but any questions? Yep, Mrs. Ritchie.
Just if we do wind up going to that snow day, then, um, our budget presentation wouldn't be until after the January 12th meeting, and that January 12th meeting tends to be when we ask a lot of questions. So will we do, does the board feel we'll have enough time to ask all of our questions, given that we're, we're potentially, let's hope there's no snow day, but if there is, do, we could always call another special meeting, I guess.
So in all my time on the board, it's only happened once. We had to cancel that meeting. I think we have sat here through lots and lots of snow, so we try our very best not to cancel that meeting. Um, and then a special meeting is usually called for. Um, but if we're sticking with the Saturday model, then I think those are our actions. Mr. Maroney.
I just have a question on the RTM Education and Finance and Budget Meeting on the 12th after our budget meeting on the 9th. It doesn't give them a lot of time to meet, formulate questions and.
We're not on the, on the, Dennis, we're not on the budget.
Yeah, we're not on the budget.
We're just on the board meetings.
We're on board.
I'll wait for the question.
Next agenda. I just did the same thing. Um, so anything on our regular meetings? Okay, so it is a, um, preliminary discussion, so we will talk about it again next meeting. Now we will move on to preliminary discussion of the 21, 22 budget meeting calendar. Um, questions, Mr. Maroney?
So January 12th seems a little fast to me as the RTM to report back after January 9th meeting. They would all have to meet on Monday and formulate questions in one day. I think we would, as a former RTM member, I think they would rather prefer another week to deliberate and, and formulate questions to have a better discussion with us.
Um, yeah, my concern is we have them on two meetings here. They, they, they really would only be on one. I would agree with Mr. Maroney that we should put them then on the 19th. And they would, um, we would remove them from the 12th. That would give them, them time and us time to digest questions. And the Board of Finance, yeah. So this is a preliminary discussion. So next time we will look at that. Any other questions on this calendar? Given what we know now is, is as good as what we can know now. Okay, thank you all. We will move on to action items, personnel items, Mrs. Stein.
So we continue to staff. These are, um, a few of them are the paraprofessionals that we asked for in one of our previous meetings for both special education and fourth grade at Ox Ridge.
May I have a motion to approve the PAR dated October 13th, 2020? Mr. Burke, so moves. Mr. Janine second, I'm sorry, Mr. Maroney seconds. All in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you all. And then Mrs. Stein, a contract between the Darian Board of Education, the Darian Registered Nurses Association, Local 1303, Chapter 141 of Council Number 4, AFSCME, and the AFL-CIO.
So I think that we went into these negotiations wanting to acknowledge the hard work that the nurses have done for us last year and continue to do this year. So we agreed that we would leave the language as it is, since we have an excellent relationship with this bargaining unit. The salary increases are two, two and a quarter, and two and a half, with a 1% increase in premium share in each of the three years of the contract, and everything else is as is.
Great. Uh, may I have a motion to approve the contract as described? Mr. Burke, Mrs. Stein, so moves. All in favor. That is also unanimous. Thank you, everybody, for that. Thank you for the hard work in those negotiations. Is there any public comment this evening?
Would you like me to go through the instructions? Please. If you would like to speak during public comment, please click the participant icon on the bottom of your Zoom screen. Next, click the raise hand option. You will notice a blue hand icon appear in the upper corner of your screen where your face, name, and/or number appears. When it is your turn to speak, the facilitator will identify you and announce that you are unmuted for public comment. Once recognized and unmuted, please state your name and address. You will have up to three minutes to comment.
Is there any public comment this evening?
Henry Zionik, you are unmuted and recognized.
Hi, Jamie Zionik again at 15 Homes Court. Um, just thank you for your discussion, um, on the 900 hours. Appreciated, and I understand, and I'm empathetic of the position of the district. Um, I understand that middle and high schools, we haven't changed the opening and closing schedules, and I think that's a higher risk group. So I'm wondering if that is really necessary at the elementary schools and if we might be able to go back to a regular schedule. And recoup those hours without, um, you know, I, I still question Fridays, but, um, but I think we might be able to go back to a regular schedule. At least it could be discussed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Zionik. Is there any other public comment this evening?
No more raised hands at this time.
Thank you very much. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Mrs. Stein, so moves. Mr. Burke seconds. All in favor. That is unanimous. Thank you very much, everybody. We are adjourned.